At six P M. I'm calling this meeting of the Anchorage School District Board to order. We want to thank everyone for coming tonight, attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, in the entire community for your investment of time and effort in our district. First, on the agenda, our roll call. All members who are in attendance, with the exception of member Wilson, who is connected to us telephonically. And I will ask our student representative, Pak, to lead us in a salute to the flag.
A pleasure to read this student flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would ask Representative Pak to read our land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion and is with honor and respect that we recognize all Indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as listed, and I have an amendment as well.
You'll go ahead and state, is there a second?
Second.
Second, go ahead and state your amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move to postpone Agenda Item C1, which is our Student Achievement Growth Assessment Goal Monitoring Session to our next regular business meeting in the month of March. And then I would also ask the board approve deviating from our typical process and allowing all public testifiers to speak during the first opportunity early in the meeting. If there's a second, I can speak to them.
Second.
Moved and seconded, if you'd like to speak to it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, I think the the goal of both of these items is to hear from as many members of the public as possible as quickly as we can. And so I think if we allow this prioritization to exist, we will ensure that we hear from as many people before it gets late and we have students who have to leave for tonight. So I would urge support. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask, is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing and hearing none, is there any objection to the motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make another amendment to the agenda.
Member Bellamy?
I'd like to move G, Item G1, to our next meeting, which would be regularly scheduled meeting, correct, March 4th, I think.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yep. Moved and seconded discussion. Seeing no hands, is there any objection to moving Item G1 to our March meeting? Seeing none, we will move that item to our next regularly scheduled meeting at the beginning of March. Without any further objection or amendment, the the agenda is adopted as amended. Thank you. First up in Item Section B is our student representative report. Mr. Pak.
Thank you, Mr. President. The primary report that I have once again is from our last SAB meeting, which happened last Tuesday in this boardroom. We had a packed-in productive meeting, I'd say. And one of the first things that we discussed as a student body is how our schools promote student voice. And although we got plenty of answers, I think there are a couple that I find interesting that I'd like to share with the board and the public. For one, Central has its Husky How podcast, and that's, I think, where students get their input on school life and such. Diamond High School has their student forum where student government members get to hear student ideas, complaints, and then transfer those, that information to the administration. Highland Academy has a morning meeting every Tuesday where staff and students get to comment on things happening at the school. And then, by my Polaris, I'm trying to be unbiased here, but we have the Polaris General Assembly where students get to speak basically like via a very parliamentary, a procedure-based government body where they get to speak on resolutions and pass them. And then, another update that we have is that we sent four students, I think, actually five students to Juneau recently from ASD, and they were fierce advocates, I heard, advocating for school funding and letting ASD students' voices be heard. And that was at the Youth Advocacy Institute, I believe. Next, we had our student assembly member, Mika Bell, discuss the resolution that the assembly heard last Tuesday, which basically called upon the ASD to hold a student drive to get students out to vote, thereby increasing civic engagement to their schools. And that's, I think, a great thing that they proposed. Next, we, as a student advisory board, we passed our amendment to the bylaws in our constitution. And that just basically moved our Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer, not Treasurer, PR Rep. elections to the second-to-last month of the school year instead of the last. And that passed with noted opposition. And one of the big items that we passed during that meeting is our resolution proposed by Eagle River. And it's called the Fine Arts Resolution. And the title, it kind of expounds upon its details and says, "An additional elective credits for high school students' participation in extracurricular fine arts programs and clubs." And what it essentially does is it adds an additional program to our credit-by-choice program in the ASD program of studies, including fine arts, because currently we do not have an avenue for students to basically put in hours, invest time into dance or theater and earn credit for it, which, like, for example, there are credit-by-choice in PE or working. So I think it makes sense for there to be one in the fine arts programs, because students put a lot of hours into that and believe it's recognizing the work they put into that. Of course, in the resolution, it says that those fine arts credits, in order to earn it, you need specific and legitimate extracurricular fine arts programs, clubs, including local dance studios, community theater companies, youth symphonies, drama clubs. And there will be, you know, people who have to verify that so that it passes through. So and it asks that 120 hours of acceptable work will count as half a semester, or a semester, 0.5 units of acceptable elective credit and a maximum of 1.5 total of credits can be earned through this option. A little bit of context, this resolution was presented and passed at the Alaska Association of Student Government. So a lot of the student governments in Alaska endorsed this resolution. And after that happened, we brought it to our local SAB, where students in our district believed that it was worth passing. And so I think I would like to present this to the board and send this an email in some form. And I believe that maybe in the coming meetings, or I'm not sure about this one, but we will have the students from Eagle River presenting this to the board. That's what I've been told. And then we did two other things in our meeting. One, we had a executive board presentation on how students can contact the legislators. It was a brief presentation going down to the details of how students can contact, find their legislators and who represents them, and how they could respectfully address their points and what they want to bring across to the legislators. And finally, we elected our president-elect. Who would be joining me in a meeting in March? She was unfortunately not be, not able to join us today, and her name is Madison Ariola. She's an incredibly passionate individual, and I am very happy to have her on board. So yeah, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Member Donnelly?
Seems like a really interesting idea, this fine arts credit. Is that something that this board can authorize, Mr. Superintendent?
Possibly, Member Donnelly. I'd like to review the details, but it seems within the realm of possibility.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Moving to our next item is a military report. I believe Colonel Hanson is here. Thank you for coming, sir.
Good evening. President Hallman and members of the board, thank you for inviting me here tonight. My name is Colonel Dustin Hanson, J-Bear's 673rd Mission Support Group Commander, and I appreciate just a few minutes to provide a military update. I first want to say I strongly appreciate Anchorage School District's Operations Officer, Mr. Anderson, and his proactive communication regarding the district's mitigation planning in the event of a Mount Spur eruption. This is something that J-Bear as well, J-Bear is also monitoring closely. We have a few lessons learned and after actual reports that we're leaning back on to see how we would respond. But most importantly, we want to make sure that we are, we remain committed to being a valuable partner, both to the district and to the municipality during an ashfall event. My second and final point, speaking of partnerships, is actually a question in the form of a question to the team here on the, on the school board. As the J-Bear community digests the impact of a budget shortfall, our parents have expressed their concerns regarding increased classroom sizes, loss of middle school sports, as well as the Ignite Program. In light of this, J-Bear wants to be a part of the solution. How do members of the school board see J-Bear best supporting the district through this budget shortfall, especially in fixing the funding formula? Thank you.
Any questions from the board? I'll answer on behalf of the board to your specific question. I, I think the biggest thing, and this really is meant for everybody, that our budget really is sort of in an interim process in that it's based on an amount of money that we feel certain about. But the appropriations process hasn't actually happened yet within the legislature. And so right now, the most critical thing is for everyone to make their desires known to their representative and to the governor. They are in bargaining between the the two houses and the governor over an amount of money. I think there's strong pressure in the legislature to increase the BSA or increase funding significantly. There's a desire by the governor to institute some reforms, and so they're, they're working around that, those two things. But I, I think it's critical that you talk about that, class sizes, activities. I, I do think that we do have a special responsibility to military families, some of whom are only here for a few years, some are here for quite a while. But we, we have a responsibility to do well by your children while you're, you're in Anchorage serving. And I think hearing from families that they value these programs would be extremely valuable. In, in knocking doors in Juneau, you get a lot of pushback about how ineffective school is. Students aren't learning. Students aren't really doing anything that matters that much. We sure hear it at meetings like this, so I, I do hope people will make sure their representatives fully understand that and that we fund at least at a level that we had last year going forward. I don't know, member Jenkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Colonel, for your time tonight, your service to our country, and the question. I think it's important to note for context that our state came within one vote of effectuating an increase to the formula we referenced just a second ago that funds the majority of ASD's operating budget. Senate Bill 140 passed with a 93% approval rating roughly a year ago. And then, just a few short weeks later, after a veto by our governor, to say and debate nothing of the merits, a significant number of legislators changed their mind. Three of those that represent Anchorage are still in office. Julie Cologne in South Anchorage, and then two Eagle River representatives, which is, I think, relevant to the, the question and the answer to your question. Representative Sadler and Representative Allard. I would imagine that there's heavy overlap between your population that serves, that lives in Eagle River. And so connecting with legislators and expressing the value that we see on our schools on base and urging just one more voice of reason to invest in our students and the programs that we see as valuable, that we know are valuable, that the data tells us are valuable, would be appreciated. And so I think those are the voices that we should lean into. And appreciate the question.
Thank you. Any other comments? Member Lessons?
One thing that we've celebrated in the Anchorage School District are, are many opportunities, our schools of choice, our programs of choice, alternative, optional language immersion. I presume that you have members of the J-Bear community who are taking advantage of those choices. And perhaps the administration has, has data that shows something to the effect of, you know, where are military families choosing? And that might equip you as a leader in the community to say that, to underscore that you're not only advocating for students in schools on base, but for your military families who truly are embedded throughout the community. And they're in neighborhood schools, and they're in elementary and middle and secondary. They are everywhere. And so we can't just champion, you know, three schools. But to, to really make sure that you have the information you need to say this is about access to all of the wonderful programs that the district has historically offered. So I would love if the administration could partner and get that information to you.
Yeah, thank you, Member Lessons. I, a thousand percent agree. And when I, when I sit before each of you once a month, like, I, I am thinking across the entire districts. I know I have hundreds, if not thousands, of students fused between Anchorage, Eagle River, even up in Matsuburu. So it's well beyond the three schools on J-Bear. And I also appreciate the fact that we can almost take a two-pronged approach. You know, we have the, the parents who are passionate about making sure their kids get the best education so that they, they want what's best for the school district. I also know that we have, you know, senior leadership from J-Bear community that are willing to go to Juneau and to, and to engage with legislature on behalf of the ASD as well.
We deeply appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Great time.
That brings us to board conference and committee reports, and I assume committee reports are probably written. I'll make note that Member Higgins and myself are at the Alaska Association of School Boards Conference in Juneau last weekend. And with a handful of our students that went through the AASB Leadership Program. And they really did an awesome job. I haven't actually talked to any of them since we've been back in Anchorage, but I think they found the conference really valuable, and they did a great job talking with legislators and other folks in the Capitol. I don't know if Member Higgins wanted to add anything?
The only thing I'll add is that the feedback I got from legislators is a lot of support for doing something with the BSA. It's still going to be a difficult process with the governor, and they know that. And this difficult process finding where the money's coming from, that's a big issue as well. But I will share with, with the president that the student involvement there was really very impressive. The legislators didn't give them an easy time, and they did a great job responding and handling some, you know, the issues and representing the Anchorage School District with a lot to be proud of. But the feedback from the public right now is critical. It has made a difference in the past. I remember when Greater Alaska Schools really became active with the legislature. There were people that went down there, lots of emails, lots of, of phone calls, and it frustrated the, the legislators, but it resulted in a large BSA increase that we wouldn't have gotten otherwise. And everybody knew that. In fact, I remember they blamed the school board for, for the fact that the Greater Alaska Schools was doing this. And we didn't have anything to reforming it, but I said, yes, we teach civics. I work for you. Everybody on the board works for you, and the legislators are your employees. And you need to tell the employees what you want. And when you do, you get a difference, you get a different outcome. So as much involvement as possible, meeting with them, reinforce the fact that they were listening. They were hearing a lot of stuff from the public, and we need to keep it up, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Member Lessons?
This is in lieu of a written report from our finance committee, but it seems relevant to just relay a couple of points here. We focused this past meeting on two things. One, the FY26 budget, and actually, we only focused on the FY26 budget. We didn't get to the second item. I'm mistaken. But we spent a great deal of time listening to an administrative report on the Balancing Act tool that the community had access to this winter for about a month. This is a new approach to generating really relevant community input in the budgeting process. And what we learned is that almost 7,000 people sort of engaged with the tool at first. About 840 took the time to complete a submission, which, which truthfully wasn't easy. But of those 840, only 48 community members were able to produce a balanced budget that did not rely on new revenue from the state. And they did so, by and large, by massively increasing people-teacher ratios. So the takeaway is that there are, the board members have not found any easy answers. Community members have not found any easy answers. And truly, the solution, in my mind, has got to hinge on a substantive increase in revenue from the state of Alaska so that we can have a balanced budget that maintains the level of services that our community has come to depend on, and I think rightfully so. So any of the presentation is available. There's a slide deck on our finance committee meeting from the 13th. And there's also just two short PDFs. One is a summary of all of the changes that are proposed at all of our elementary schools. And the second is a PDF of the staffing changes at secondary and alternative schools. So it's just a helpful, it's a shorter version than the entire 400 and something-page budget book to understand what's happening at all of the schools when it comes to, I think, what's closest to a lot of people's hearts, which is classroom teachers, class sizes, and the services that those teachers provide to our students.
Thank you very much. Any other board comments? Seeing none, Item C, we have delayed until our March meeting. That brings us to our superintendent update.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this evening, I'd like to use my superintendent update to keep the community informed about our budget. We have a lot of people in the room today and outside the room today who love their school, they love their programs, and they just want to understand what is going on, what are our options and path forward. So I'd like to put a PowerPoint presentation up. We'll give ourselves a minute to transition. So here's a PowerPoint presentation that'll be co-led by me and my chief financial officer, Mr. Andy Ratliff. I'd like to open with just a few remarks. If we could go to Slide eight, please. I'd like the community and general public and board members to focus on this slide for a moment because this tells a very interesting story about school funding in the state of Alaska. So this deck shows perp student funding over the past 10 years in fiscal years. So if you look at the column all the way on the right, you'll see our current fiscal year that we're planning for, which is the FY26 budget. But when you look backwards, you'll see the history of the, of the school funding. And that red bar that you see at the very top is essentially what the, what an inflation-adjusted base student allocation would be. So I'll use this term base out, base student allocation quite a bit. You've probably heard the term BSA fairly often in, in different contexts. But essentially, that's a per-student funding number that you plug into this complicated formula that essentially is the structure for school finance in the state of Alaska. So why is that blue bar very relevant to this conversation? The fact of the matter is, is that that blue bar has essentially been the same level of funding for about 10 years. You'll notice there was a $30 increase in FY24, but that's $30 per individual student. So when you step back and we think about our household budgets and think about how the cost of fuel has gone up exponentially since FY17, the cost of rent, the cost of goods, eggs, what have you. Those same things happen within school systems when we think about the rising cost of labor, when we think about the cost of energy to heat our buildings. When we think about all these different factors, what you find is that what was once worth 5960 is essentially worth a little over $4,000 in today's terms. So we've lost quite a bit of spending power since 2017, and that's an issue. And I think the issue was alluded to by President Hallman a moment ago, but I'd like to underscore it. It's a very good point where that 5960 number, that blue bar that you see, is essentially what the district has budgeted over. Why did we choose to budget around that per-student number? Because that's the only number that we are entitled to per Alaska statute. You'll find that 5960 number in the law books, and we can, for the most part, reliably expect that level of funding to come to ASD. But you'll notice that there are other different colors on top of these blue bars, and those represent a couple of different things. Those represent the ways that the district has balanced its budget over time. And you'll see an interesting story of how the state has come through quite a bit. You can see in FY19, you'll see a small orange bar. That's the level of additional state funding outside of the formula that was received that year. And you'll see little spatterings of orange throughout this graph. But the point is, is that we don't know what that orange number is or how much that number will be until months after the ASD board has already passed a budget. So that's the quandary that we're in now. We have no idea what the final revenue number would be. I would say that many of us are hopeful that that number will be higher than what, than what's written in law, but we won't know that, and it would put us in a very precarious financial situation if we budgeted for dollars that we don't have. If we were to project revenue, for example, that runs the risk of all sorts of things, essentially boiling down to funding positions that you don't have money in the bank to pay for. So that's what we're trying to avoid here. But why that's so devastating for the way that we create budgets in the state of Alaska is that we need to put a budget forward that assumes essentially no increase from the state, which may not be the case. So when you see the budget that's been prepared, that everybody's seen, that has all sorts of drastic cuts, that's because this is our attempt to try to balance the budget with those dollars that are prescribed in law. With that said, we do have hopes that that funding will come in, but essentially, the issue is we have no idea what that level of funding would be. And that brings us to this conversation where I'd like to walk us through kind of how we got here and what are the next steps. But the point of it is, is that this budget that we've prepared, I would say, does not reflect our aspirations as a school district. Our aspirations are to keep our class sizes low, to offer a wide variety of electives, and to really protect the programs that we feel make our school system one of the best school systems in the country. But all of those things are being put at stake by what I would characterize as 10 years of systemic neglect at the legislative level. And that's where we can partner. As you reflect on as an audience member, if you're listening online, if you feel that the way that this is working is not working for our kids, I think our legislators would like to hear from you. And they'll certainly be hearing from us at the dais because we truly believe that sensible path forward in terms of improving the school funding formula is the way to go. But only collectively do I think we'll ultimately get there. So that, that's what I wanted to share with you at the very beginning. Now, as we built this budget, there are a couple of things that we wanted to keep in mind. So again, this doesn't reflect our aspirations as a school district. The fact that we've increased PTR in this budget, the fact that we've put incredible programs like immersion on, on this budget as a potential reduction. That's not a reflection that we feel that these programs are not valuable. It's really a reflection of how devastating the school funding situation is. And what we're committed to at this board table is to figure out a way to make the case to find a sensible path forward to reform school funding. So that way we can reliably predict what our revenue is and plan our budgets months in advance and not try to predict months prior. Uh, so we need to really turn the, the cycle upside down to, to really fulfill our promise that we'd like to, to offer to our community, which is offering fantastic programs. So with that said, that, that's a lot of my talking. I'd like our chief financial officer to kind of walk us through this entire deck for the, the sake of the public's understanding.
Right. Thank you. So really just want to go through quickly. I know we've got a lot of speakers tonight, so I'll go through this, but really just to talk about, here's the overview of our budget currently, as it sits currently, kind of how we got there and kind of what the next steps are and what the outlook on the legislature is. So currently we're in the process where we have to have a balanced budget submitted to the assembly by the first Monday in March. That's in municipal charter. Um, and that's so they can get their tax requests out in April. So really it doesn't give the legislature a whole lot of time in the current system that is set up for them to make that decision before we have to make our decisions. Um, in a perfect world, we'd have something inflation proof where we could know, uh, and be certain of what our next year's revenue is. But frankly, that's just not the case. And, um, hopefully we can get there, but you know, in 20 years it hasn't gotten there yet. So. So really that's our calendar. The legislature's meeting now, generally they wrap up in May sometime, then the governor has to sign the bill. So like last year, we didn't know how much money we were going to have for this current year until June 28th, which presents, uh, some challenges. As far as our general fund revenue picture goes, we're going to be about $43 million lower than what we are this year. Two things kind of driving that are, one is an enrollment decline. So we lost a little over a thousand kids from what we were projecting this year. Um, and then we're projecting to lose a couple of hundred more kids next year. So for the state revenue, you'll see that operating money, the operating grants outside that BSA, the one-time money, about $49 million, uh, that we don't have built in this budget. Uh, we are going to use more fund balance than we did last year as we were able to save some of that from the one-time funding we got this year to kind of push forward to next year to help alleviate some of these cuts, but it's certainly not enough to, um, alleviate the drastic measures that we're taking. You'll see about $12 million in foundation funding going away. Uh, about seven and a half million dollars of this is a direct, uh, switch from state funding to local funding. So part of the required left local effort that requires the property taxes goes in, that went up by about seven and a half million for next year. So then the state's going to pay less. A lot of times we get asked, why do my property taxes keep going up? But the school district keeps asking for more money. Uh, and the answer is that required local contribution goes up along with our property values. And then the state money goes down dollar for dollar. So we don't have any more money. It's just who pays switches. So you all see it differently as taxpayers. Uh, so really $43 million loss in revenue plus about 20 or 25 million dollars on inflation in this $638 million total budget for 2425. That's where we get to that 65, 70 million dollars of reductions that we had to make to be able to get to a balanced budget. So where that money goes in a real broad view, about 344 million of that goes into, uh, for next, this is for plan for next year, goes into direct classroom instruction. That's teachers, uh, paraprofessionals, special education teachers, all those folks directly in front of students, along with the supplies, materials, equipment and services, software that goes along with that. Uh, we have direct student supports, which counselors, nurses, librarians, security, student activities, uh, curriculum development, behavior supports, you know, principals, clerical staff, the schools, all those things that make a bill like in that school building that can really make it happen. And then we spend about $81 million in operations and maintenance, which are keeping our buildings safe and functional and clean. So that's our maintenance workers, custodians. And then we have administration, about 34 million, which is really the folks sitting around here, uh, our, our payroll budget, human resources, a lot of our IT folks, risk management, all these kind of backend business functions that you really are necessary to operate an organization of our size. Uh, there's a table at the bottom that really shows how that was dispersed for FY twenty five and then FY twenty six and then the percent of total. So as we're looking at this budget, we did, I mean, we had to take, uh, we took cuts to pretty much every area to get this to balance. And frankly, it's going to be difficult to implement. So. But you can tell the percentage of the totals is about the same across the board. So we did take a, a good look at every department, every line item to see what reductions we could possibly make. So these changes, you know, this is really what you're going to see at the school level. You're really going to feel that PTR adjustment of plus four. That's about 195 teachers, about almost $25 million is what that cost or what you save by increasing the PTR. Uh, we did reduce about 70 FTE for, just for that enrollment. Like I said, we lost over a thousand kids this year, anticipating losing a few hundred more. The program-based teachers, those would be the immersion teachers, which many of you here are for. Uh, holdback teachers, which is really our pool of teachers that we push out based on enrollment bumps or changes that we can anticipate going into next year. Cause when we're making projections in November, December for our enrollment for next year, undoubtedly they're not going to be a hundred percent accurate. And we do have to have some flexibility to be able to address those class size bubbles, um, or scheduling at the secondary level. But additionally, we're cutting principals, counselors, librarians, library assistants, nurses, um, some clerical workers, paraprofessionals, noon duties, battle of the books, some of the funding for battle of the books. Some of the, um, addenda, elementary schools, all middle school sports, high school, uh, hockey gymnastics and swimming and diving. And then just some other changes that we made to services, supplies and equipment. This year we are taking a look at even special education changes. This is one thing that we haven't looked at, or we haven't had to make reductions in in many years. It's about 54 FTE in total. That does include the 24 or so that's in the gifted program to service ignite and some testing. But really this is the first year that we've taken a good hard look at, uh, special education and made reductions there. We made a chunk of department administration changes, uh, including to finance, purchasing, human resources, IT, mental health, teaching and learning. The custodials that you see there is mainly a reduction of, uh, Lakewood and Inaka Valley closing. So that's just those, uh, positions that are going away with the schools. Uh, you see that in some of the things with principals, librarians and nurses too, is they all have staff at those schools that are being reduced as well. But we're also reducing some security and maintenance personnel, as well as a big chunk of our administrative services, supplies and equipment, which is going to be, that will be like to replace heavy equipment, do major maintenance on our buildings, things like that. Some of those are the kind of big chunks of it. And then really any, much of the contingents that we have to account for any sort of changes within or unplanned changes or emergencies that we have as the year comes up. So about almost $9 million or 42 people coming out of that. So then we get to back to this slide where it shows the base student allocation that really has remained unchanged, um, at least for the last decade. Uh, that did change in FY twenty four, did come along with the REEDS Act. So that $30 produced about $2 million for the district. It also required several million dollars more in additional costs. So even though we did get a BSA bump that year, the cost to maintain the programs that were included with that were considerably more than what was part of that base student allocation. You do see gaps between these funding levels up the top in this red line. That's generally representative budget reduction. So how we got the balance to budget, you know, if everything tracked with inflation pretty well, that gap would be what we had to reduce in those years. So kind of looking ahead and what, what was done with the state budget. So here's, this represents the state budgets between 17 and 26 as well. So, and the percent change. So, um, and I've highlighted the deed K-12 support for districts. So this really is what's in the base student allocation, the funding that flows from deed to districts. And then separated out the other deed operations. But it shows about $75 million in terms of real dollars. This isn't a flight inflation adjusted. $75 million in less state revenue dedicated to K-12 education than they did in 2017. For the large part in for our budget, I have less than 300 million in state money coming in for next year as proposed. We haven't got less than $300 million in real dollars in state money since 2010 or 2009. So it's been a long time since they gave us less than 300 million. But you can see all their other departments going up by and large by, you know, 25, 30%, which is fairly in line with inflation and what you would expect to see. You do see some outliers with corrections and public safety. But, um, by and large, most of the state budgets track. Inflation is generally when they're setting these in the front end, they account for that inflationary cost of contracts, medical insurance, liability insurance. All those things that are tied to their personnel to begin with. With the exception of course, that K-12, which doesn't get that inflation adjustment to start with. And then they use that at the end of the cycle to, um, whenever they're doing their final funding appropriations. And unfortunately that means it's generally tied to, uh, discussion whether do you want education or PFD money? So that's kind of one of the hangups I have personally is at the end of the cycle, if you haven't funded, uh, K-12 education with inflation, you're going to always pit that against the PFD and that's not fair to our students, frankly. Looking forward to what some of the bills that are in the legislature right now, we have HB sixty nine. Uh, this was introduced by, in the House and it ties the base student allocation to a preceding three years of average inflation, uh, starting in 25, 26, and then adds an additional $1,000. So they're really trying to catch up on some of that lost inflationary time and then putting an inflationary component in there. So we can kind of get out of this cycle of every year we come out with a balance, a budget that has a deficit in it and we have to make cuts and then potentially add them back. Uh, so this really would mitigate a lot of our problems and the reasons why we're here tonight is this chronic underfunding. But that would add about $1,300 in 26, 727, about 628. How that looks in terms of real dollars, um, this is kind of a, uh, a quick overview of what our adopted budget is, what we're preliminary proposing, and then just kind of an illustrative example of what could happen if HB sixty nine was passed as it sits. If we added back 65 million or so in some of the reductions that we've made that we've discussed tonight. We would still be spending 23 million of our fund balance to shore up that budget. So we would, um, but going in these out years, we would have, we'd have a little bit of money left over. And this is kind of, this is cumulative. So it's not necessarily a new 6 million, a new 25 million, a 17 million. Uh, but we would have some money to be able to restore some programs or even lower the PTR if that was the will of the board. But. So this is a promising bill. It does have a lot of great components in it. It would allow us for some better financial and instructional planning long-term. It didn't address, uh, transportation, but that's kind of something else we can work on. The other bill that was out there was from the governor, which HB seventy six and a companion bill of Senate Bill eighty two, which would provide $450 per K six student for, uh, uh, reading proficiency. So it's more of an incentive. So if they're at, if they are proficient, you get the $450. It would make charter schools approved by the state board rather than the local board. Transportation will increase by about $103. And then it, but it would extend the moratorium on bond debt reimbursement from 2025 to 20, 2030. And that's really the component of, uh, when we pass a bond, it used to be the state would pay 60 or 70% of the cost of those bonds. Uh, since 2015, they quit doing that and we, uh, the taxpayers pick up a hundred percent of all the bonds. It was supposed to come back at a 50% rate in 25, but they're proposing extending that even longer. And then it also moved correspondence ADM in the foundation formula. And I'll show you how that works in a minute. And increase the CTE multiplier, uh, from one and a half percent to 4%. And it would also require or provide a $5,000 teacher recruitment retention bonus, uh, as well. So how that would look is it would provide about a little over $12 million, about 3.8 million in new correspondence funding and 8.4 million in CTE funding. And generate about $4 million in new transportation funding. So while it would be a little bit hopeful, we wouldn't be able to restore nearly very many of the programs at all, maybe a two PTR, uh, change. And then we'd have significant deficits in all of the out years because it doesn't address any sort of inflationary challenges. Uh, but kind of getting back to that, the correspondence program and how that would affect those, those, that funding is, so there's two things, one in the blue here, and that's how we're currently funded. And one in the gray is what the proposal would change. So the formula really goes your ADM, which is pretty close to your enrollment and rolls it through a variety of factors, including one for school size. One for a 20% multiplier for special education, that it kind of works as a block grant. Similar for CTE, which is currently one and a half percent increase on that. Uh, that would be changed to four. And then currently we take the correspondence count, multiply it by 90%. And that gets their ADM for which funding is, uh, generated. So the amount of state funding is about, you know, $5,400 currently per student for family partnership. And I only chose them because it's our biggest school, but the other ones are funded nearly, or the, the exact same. Uh, West High would get about $6,800 per student in, under this, uh, this scenario. So if they had to change that, where they put this family partnership at the beginning of the formula at a 1.0 and go through, um, the school size factor. Within the school size factor, the state's foundation formula, any school below 1,022 students gets less than a 1.0 adjustment on the school size. So for West High, we get about 0.94 for every kid, uh, in, in that school. So under the new model, uh, correspondent student would get about $7,400 per student. And a high school student would get about, or West High student would get under 7,000. So we'd be getting more money per student for correspondence than we would be for these large corporate comprehensive, uh, schools. Currently that would be, uh, Bartlett East Diamond Service, South Rome and Mears. That would be, we would get less money for each one of those students than we do for, uh, correspondence under this proposal. So there's some inequity there that it seems, but, um, that's just kind of the nature of the proposal. And really that's the high level overview of this budget that I don't think any of us really want to have to enact eventually. And hopefully some of these house bills go, the house bill goes through and we, um, kind of address some of that inflation proofing too.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. Any additional presentation? Moving to, uh, member lessons, I'm sorry.
This is a request perhaps for a follow-up in Board Connect or whatever venue is appropriate. Uh, the sheets that have that, the breakdown of, um, by school that we've reviewed. They don't differentiate between the PTR plus four and enrollment. They aggregate everything together. Is there a way to get a breakdown of how just enrollment declines spell, would, would play out? And you know, another additional column of how just the PTR plus four would play out for each of those schools?
Yeah, that would be easy enough.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Member check-ins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the presentation, Mr. Ratliff, and, uh, maybe a question for Dr. Brian or the team. You know, going over the numbers from how we're adept, um, our state government, at least in the legislature's adept that in inflation-proofing some areas of our spending as a state, um, is really striking. You know, seeing a 83% increase for the, um, public safety department, the, um, 52% increase. It looks like for, um, our prison system, our Department of Corrections. Look legislators, I believe as of January 1, um, 2024, received a 67% wage increase year over year. And our, our allocation to school districts, um, just hasn't kept up. Is, is that attributable specifically to the fact that there's a formula in statute? Or is there something else going on that, um, we can point to as to how we can be better advocates?
Uh, through the president, I don't believe there is a statute that says what that it has to, any certain department has to increase by that much. So yeah, I think it's just part of the process. Like when we do our budget, when we do our pro-form, like here's the cost of our employees, let's roll them all forward. And that becomes our new, our kind of our benchmark for the next year. Um, unfortunately that doesn't get taken into account with the DK-12 support. Uh, it's, but it does in the, I believe it does in the other budgets that the state actually manages.
And just to put a fine point on that, I mean, for the, those of you tuning into this, if you look at the slide, we list almost every agency in the state government and you see these large increases, 52% since 2017 for the Department of Corrections. In fact, it looks like every agency received an increase for inflation since 2017. Even the Department of Education at the state level, but not the actual school districts themselves. That's the only body that's gone down by minus 5.8%. With that said, what this describes to me is that clearly at the state level, there seems to be an acknowledgement that inflation does have an impact on your ability to fulfill essential state services. Why that hasn't trickled down to K-12, but it has to every other agency is a very interesting. Why that hasn't trickled down to K twelve, but it has to every other agency is a very interesting question that I think we should all be asking ourselves.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions? Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in a recent House education meeting, um, it was discussed that perhaps uh, one way to, to hold down our. Spending and reduce our deficit year over year would be to, to not engage in our current practice, which is budgeting for. Um, cost of living or wage increases for staff. Right now, our budget includes some amount for um, potent, to potentially settle contracts to provide. Wage increases to educators and support staff. I'm curious, because we, we've also prioritized and recognized the, the need to retain our staff and so maybe a question for either. The superintendent or Mr. Lang, what would it look like and, and would that further um, challenge us in retaining our staff if we didn't? Um, work to offer a, a cost of living adjustment for salaries and. Uh, you know, I know we're um, highest in the nation per cap and on healthcare costs. If we didn't address that either, would that. Further hamper our ability to retain our staff?
Through the president, great question, Member Jacobs. I think when you look at this slide, we're all, again, all the state agencies are receiving these inflationary adjustments. Um, again, looking at the screen, uh, Department of Corrections, a fifty two point three percent increase. What that indicates to me is not necessarily something that's bad. I think what it indicates is that. The state recognizes that if your wages are not competitive, you, you might be unable to fulfill that service that you're trying to provide to the community. So I would imagine that some of these inflationary adjustments have been uh, to recruit more and more staff. In fact, you know, I was reading Alaska Public Media a couple of weeks ago. And there was a quote from one of the men who approved the sixty eight percent increase in legislator pay. And that's essentially what he said, where, you know, if we want to have the best people in political office, we need to pay them a salary commensurate, right? So if only we. Uh, substituted that thinking with politician for teacher, I think we'd have one of the top performing school systems in the entire country, if not the world. Um, I think what you pay and offer to your employees is directly correlated to the quality that you'll get. And I would remind the, the public that when we talk about teachers, one of our most precious resources that we have in the system. That's a national labor market. Uh, when you look at the number of teachers that the state of Alaska produces, it's probably less than half of the number that. Alaska actually needs for all of its schools. Uh, so just to put a number on it, you know, the University of Alaska system. Probably produces around a hundred and sixty teachers a year and yet ASD alone needs to hire over two hundred teachers a year. Let alone all the other districts in the state that need to recruit teachers. So what does that mean? That means that um, by, by virtue of that fact, by virtue of that number game, ASD, the heart of ASD's talent pool. Lives in the lower forty eight. Why is that an issue? Because we need to compete with the salary and wages of teachers. In forty other states and I have uh, you know, very depressing news in that Alaska is the only state in the entire union that doesn't. Offer the option of a defined benefit. So not only do we need to be competitive on the wage side, we need to be competitive on the benefit side. But uh, things are not working in our favor when it comes to being competitive at that national pool. And you see the impact of not adjusting for inflation in a number of different examples. I can give a couple of education examples. So. For example, uh, there was a time in ASD where we held our transportation professional wages pretty flat. And that's because funding from the state for transportation was pretty flat. So you can do that a number of years, but some of you were with me a couple of years ago when I was here, it was my first couple of months. And a third of our bus drivers left ASD to take on higher paying jobs in the private sector with the tourism industry. So what did that mean? That meant in the Matsu and in ASD, we didn't have bus drivers. That's the impact of not being responsive to market pressures has on school systems. Some of us may attend schools that had shelf-stable meals at one point. A shelf-stable meal is a non-hot meal that gets served to students. It may look like uh, beef jerky, some cheezits and, and some other. Foods like that, not ideal. Um, in fact, we don't even get reimbursed by the federal government for that. But that's the impact of not keeping your wages for kitchen staff commensurate with wages in the hospitality industry or in food services industry. Right? We're competing with other industries beyond education for food service workers. And then when we look at our teachers, one of our biggest groups where it's a national talent pool and. Uh, just to put a fine pin on what I was saying, there, there's a very low supply of teachers and a very high demand of teachers. So if we went into a. Yeah, eleventh grade economics class, you would know exactly what's gonna happen. We'll lose out on the teachers. So I think that this slide that's up here tells you everything you need to know about the priorities of those who've been um, in power at the state level for a really long time.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have Member Wilson and then Member Bellamy. Uh, Member Wilson, if you can unmute.
Yes. Can you hear me okay? Perfect. There, I know there's a lot of um, advocates for charter schools in our audience tonight, so I just wanted to. I, I wanted to see if you could address, I know we've addressed it before, would like to address it again because I often hear about um. The importance of offering different types of programs, which Anchorage School District does a wonderful job of, of advocating for and. But there's still that lack of understanding in the community, how, of how charter schools are funded. Um, can you go ahead and readdress that? I, I would much appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Wilson. I'm gonna hand it off to our CFO in a moment, but I will start off by saying, one of the best things you can do for a charter school. Is to really look at that base student allocation formula, because the same foundation formula that applies for a brick and mortar neighborhood school. Also applies to our charter schools. So when you really dig into the books of our charter schools, you'll find that. They're struggling too and they have an additional disadvantage and that they don't have a facility. Um, that's rent free oftentimes. In fact, ASD has probably been one of the most supportive school districts to charter schools. In the state because we're one of the first school districts that I know of that put a charter school on a bond, so we could restore facilities, so we could have a really great. Facilities for our students. And two, um, we're in advanced conversations to seriously consider offering two vacant ASD buildings. To those charter schools, so that way they don't have the burden of lease payments, so they can put more dollars into the classroom. So you can write all sorts of bills about local control, who, who authorizes charter schools? Should it be the local board versus the. State board, but the bottom line is the best thing you can do for a charter school is to adequately fund the charter school. And the bills that tackle the base student allocations are the mechanisms to do that. Uh, Mr. Ratliff, anything did I, did I miss?
No, that's it. They generally track the foundation formula, so they roll their student count through the formula, just like any other school. Multiply it by the base student allocation and get their uh, share of the funding. And then there's a four percent cap on the administrative costs that can come out that, so their costs are, or their. The money directed specifically for that school is a much more prescribed in statute, but it, it really is the same mechanism as any other school gets their money.
Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just kind of want to go back to a, a comment that the, a couple of comments that the superintendent made regarding. Just recruitment and retention and how do we, you know, it's been recommended at a recent um. Hearing, uh, led, uh, education hearing that we just flat, just go flat with our salaries, right? We just don't increase. We are in the middle of settling um, three contracts, which this budget does reflect. Um, but I, I just want to reiterate, I mean, we can't. And, and as you stated, that, you know, we don't have a defined benefit for our teachers. So they literally get what they put in, not what they actually deserve. Um, so I guess, how, how can we, can you explain a little bit about how important it is that we do give? Um, give our, you, you know, we find ways to adequately fund and, and, and uh, give our teachers benefits.
Thank you. Yeah, Member Bellamy, one of the best things that we can do is to competitively pay our employees. I'm really being aware of what those local market pressures are, so comparing ASD to. Local school districts like the Matsu or other districts in the state, but like I mentioned, we're competing for recent college graduates from colleges of education. Throughout the United States, so we also need to be aware of what those new grads from an education school in Texas are looking at. And having come from Texas, I know that they're a state where the cost of living is about eighteen percent lower and the wages are about twelve. Plus percent higher, plus they have a defined benefit. So that's just one example of dozens where it's more competitive to. Um, look at other places than Alaska, so that's why you, we've really been pleading with the legislature to really look into a sensible path forward because. This isn't just a teacher issue. When we look at the, the stats for Alaska writ large, you see that young people are leaving the state at. Higher rates than really they should. Um, you see within Anchorage specifically, the age of our working population is uh. Going upwards, so we're losing a lot of our young professionals. So to bring it back to education, if we didn't. Um, if we didn't remain competitive or if we lose competitiveness even more than we already have, what we're talking about is a vacant classroom. That's really what's at stake here. Um, if you aren't able to hire a teacher because they have so many better options wherever they're from. Um, or wherever they get a job from first, um, we may not have that teacher. Um, we may be leaning on permanent substitutes or combining classes, which is the last thing that we would want. So you can't ignore. The impact of inflationary pressures as they drive the, the whole labor market. And again, this is beyond just education. It's for a lot of different industries. But my eye is on teachers because I know we're lagging far behind, you know, uh, Iser. Which is the group uh, at the University of Alaska Anchorage that does research on economics and social sciences. I think they. One of their key findings from a presentation they did uh, today actually. Found that after adjusting for geographic costs, Alaska's per people spending is fifteen percent below the national average. And it's fallen consistently since twenty seventeen. So we often hear from outsiders that Alaska has one of the highest per people spending in the. United States, why should we add more funding? But when again, you uh, contrib, when you factor in the very unique geographies and other factors of Alaska and really compare cost of living indices. Between urban areas, when you actually do that math, you still see that we're actually lagging behind a lot of states when it comes to spending, which is directly. Correlated to the amount that we're able to offer staff. So to take no action on the wage front. Means that you may not have those people to fulfill those services, right? When you think about the bus drivers that we may not be able to hire, the teachers that we may not be able to have in our. Schools, it has a direct impact on the very people in this room, the, the people with kids in the classrooms. Um, what did I miss, uh, Mr. Ratliff?
And Member Jacobs.
I appreciate, I appreciate Dr. Brian addressing the, the Iser information, because I think the hearing, I, I watched the, um. The presentation and Senate Education and it was fascinating to know that they, they just updated that, that data. I'm curious if we can explain a bit, one of the, the, the questions I run into at a community council. Um, periodically is, um, and ask for an explanation as to how it could be. That um, a school district that has um, lost students within the last ten years. Um, can't just trim its budget year over year um, and ignore inflation. And so could. Um, Dr. Brian or the team explain the relationship for how um, an operating budget uh, for a school district might outpace. Uh, with inflation might outpace the decline in revenue from a decline in enrollment.
Sure, through the president, I'll give one example and I'm sure Mr. Ratliff has others. So think about student transportation, just as one example. So ASD has lost thousands of students. Since um, the past ten years, but that doesn't mean that we have fewer bus routes necessarily. If you still have a child that lives in. The same number of neighborhoods that we've serviced for decades that may not result in reduced costs for transportation. It may mean increased costs as the cost of fuel goes up, but that's just one example of a function that's driven by. Uh, not number of students, but number of routes or number of buses. And there's actually a lot of functions within a school system that operates similarly. Um, Mr. Ratliff, would there may be other examples you might know?
Yeah, I mean, through the president, the biggest driver really is, you know, as those children go down, so do our dollars. We get funded on a per student basis, so if fewer students, we have. Fewer dollars, so it's not like we're having the same amount of dollars with fewer kids to educate, we have less dollars. Um, and as an example, if we lose a hundred kids or so, we can cut maybe four or five teachers. Um, maybe make up six hundred thousand dollars in actual cost when those students might generate a million dollars in revenue. So those hundred students may be across all these different schools across the district and it's, you know, maybe only a hundred, a small fraction of our uh, population. So, but really that other four hundred thousand, where does that come from? Because it has to come from either. Administrative school support somewhere else other than just kind of that direct instruction. So it makes it doubly difficult as you're cutting the, or as you're losing those students to make up for um, both the lost revenue. And trying to trim out those support services that are generally based on a school ba, on a per school metric as well.
Any other questions or comments, Member Jacobs?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think my last question, um, you know, we, we saw, um, I think I, I was sent a couple of times in, in article from a. Um, a blog of some kind indicating that one of our um, community engagement uh, departments specifically, our divert, uh, Department of. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Community Engagement saw a budgetary increase. Um, and, you know, I investigated it further and talked with administration and found out that it wasn't actually the case. It wasn't new spending, it was. Um, realignment of a contract and I think some small um, cost of living increases for, for staff salaries. Um, but it, it caused a broader inquiry regarding district administration and our costs and. We've addressed that topic in previous slide decks and work sessions and I, I think in my notes, I have a, a screenshot of a. A figure that captures the amount of our FY twenty five budget. Um, that goes towards district administration and then compares that to other school districts in Alaska and, and it appeared that we're. One of the, the more efficient districts in the state, um, specifically compared to the other large districts, Fairbanks, Juneau, Matsu. Um, the Keen Eye, Peninsula Borough, um, in terms of the, the percent of our operating budget that goes towards district administration. Um, I'm curious if Dr. Brian or the team could elaborate uh, on that fact and then maybe discuss ways that we've. Reduced district administrative costs over time.
Sure, through the president. So I did look at my notes and we did this calculation back for FY twenty five where we found that ASD actually had the. Top four most efficient uh, district administrations in the state. So we looked at all the different uh, functions by different school district and. We were fairly efficient, which makes sense when you think about the economies of scale that we can achieve for a district our size. There are certain things that don't have to expand dramatically. Just because you have more employees. Um, at the end of the day, you only need so many people to help cut the checks, for example. So there are some efficiencies there. Um, but overall, we've also made a lot of reductions over time as well, which has resulted in a very lean operation. Uh, Mr. Ratliff, would you like to add any insight to this?
Um, sure, just kind of anecdote, anecdotally speaking from the departments that I supervise. Uh, in the business management, I mean, I've cut almost thirty percent of my accounting staff, a third of the budget staff, seventeen percent of our purchasing staff. A third of our grant writing staff, half of the CFO staff, which is now just me and one other dude. Um, and really, when we make those cuts, like. One of those positions from the CFO staff that was cut was of my job pre, like five jobs ago. And I'm still doing a lot of that work that I was doing five jobs ago, because we haven't found people to do it or we haven't hired any new. Any new people to take my place. Um, so we have made these cuts and it's been over, you know, of course, about twelve years or so that these cuts have been made. Um, just trying to get more efficient, but we're at a point where it's really hard to make further reductions without. Kind of a mission jeopardizing our mission critical functions of financial reportings and meeting payroll. Um, to the question about the diversity, equity, inclusion, community engagement increases. Uh, there was an increase for a contract for American Sign Language interpreters for community use. Typically, those have been paid like kind of wherever we could beg, borrow, steal and transfer money over into um, to pay for these services. Uh, we've increased the, the need to have them and then just also the, the right thing to do, have that inclusion. So now we have, we'll have two line items in our budget. One is in the deaf and hard of hearing account, which pays for. Uh, those services that are listed as kind of a special education support by our state function. And then there's one in the community services or uh, diversity, equity, inclusion, community engagement. That line item is more for these public meetings that aren't necessarily classified as uh, special education, but we still want to provide those services.
And follow, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the information, Dr. Bryant, Mr. Ratliff, thank you. I, I won't ask the, the question I asked regarding assistant principals in our work session, but I did want to highlight that I. Appreciate administration's honesty that, you know, as we continue to cut administrative positions and assistant principal, sounds like it's one of them. Unfortunately, we can't guarantee that those duties won't fall to, to teachers and so. I, I think a concern I have and something I'll use for the rest of the budget process is asking. Uh, as we reduce other things that, that aren't classroom staff, if we're adding duties to our classroom staff. Um, that inherently is um, just logically unsound if our goal is to uh, improve academic outcomes and so. And so I might appreciate both the conversation tonight as well as during our work session. So thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing the hands are white, we will move to section E of our agenda, which is public comment. We typically set aside an hour at the beginning of the meeting when we have a large crowd. We often go beyond that to try to let everybody get to speak before it gets very late. Because we do have a large number of people signed up, we have reduced the speaking time to two minutes. I'm sorry that we have to do that, but we do want everybody to get the chance that has come here tonight to speak. And so we, we limited the time that way. I am gonna, I know there's gonna be a lot of enthusiasm about some of the testimony. We'll ask people not to cheer or clap. It does slow the process down and we have more than 100 people to get through. If, if people are excited, if they wave hands silently, that works. That doesn't keep anyone, I think you, from, from moving along or from hearing their name called. I will call two people to the podium. When one leaves, I'll try to call the next person so that they can be down here. Again, it cuts down the time walking back and forth and it helps get more people to the podium and give them their opportunity to speak. The school board does not answer questions during testimony. We are here to listen to people. We do ask that you not attack people's motives or other, other uncivil things. We do want to hear what you have to say about the issues and we will proceed with that. We do allow students to testify first because we know they have to get home and do a lot of homework in, in time for school tomorrow. We follow that with the parents of students that have a student here and, and they're riding together. And then we will get to everybody else on the list after that. So having said all that, we will start with our students that are signed up to testify. And I have Andy down and I know that's not me, but if you'll come up to the podium along with Nicholas Heinrichs. And what we ask you to do is get close to the microphone. Doesn't work if you're very far away from it. And if you will state your name for the record, then you have two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andy. Good evening. I'm a junior from Diamond High School. For the past three years, I've been part of the Diamond Swim Team. I'm here today to testify against the school board's decision to cut swimming as a high school sport. I started swimming when I was three years old. My dad taught me how to kick and float. Coach Brian taught me the four strokes and I then joined the Aurora Swim Team. The Aurora Swim Team practices at the Diamond High Swimming Pool. At the front of the pool is the school record board. Every time I walked on the pool deck, I was able to see the names and the times of the best swimmers from Diamond. I still remember my friends and I staring at that record board, wondering if someday our names would be on it. During middle school, I was fortunate enough to hang out and practice with older students, older swimmers in high school. They would talk about swimming during the high school season, the rehearsed training, the duel meets, the afterparties, regions and state. Hearing these conversations, I couldn't wait to join the Diamond Swim Team. In 2022, I became a freshman at Diamond. I finally was able to join the Diamond Swim Team. I set goals for myself. One of them was to podium in an event at state in my senior year. Freshman year, I made the state team as an alternate. Sophomore year, I qualified in one event at state. Junior year, I qualified in two events at state. Next year will be my senior year, my last year swimming for Diamond, my last year to achieve my goal. When I heard about the proposed budget cut, the proposed budget that would cut high school swimming, I was devastated. I wouldn't be able to reach my goal. I wouldn't even have the opportunity to try. Just like me, other swimmers have goals for high school swimming. I know friends whose goal is to win at state. Others just want to get a varsity letter. Regardless, we all work hard every day to achieve our goal. When the school board cuts swimming, it's. It's not just high school swimming, there are many other swimmers that are still in middle and elementary school. Just like me, they probably also stare at that school record board, wanting to see their names on it one day. I wish that they will at least have the opportunity to try. Please keep high school swimming on the budget.
Thank you for your testimony. We also have Conrad Spillane coming next and Mr. Heinrichs, if you'll state your name, you have two minutes.
My name is Nicholas Heinrichs and I'm in the immersion program at Government Hill Elementary. I'm also in the Ignite program. The Spanish immersion and Ignite programs are a huge part of why I like school, because they challenge me to think in new ways. They also motivate me to and expose me to new possibilities. I get to learn different types, like different topics like aviation and optical science. I've been learning Spanish since I was three. It's interesting and useful. I've already helped my grandpa with a business deal where the other person spoke mostly Spanish. I know you have to make hard choices. Gracias por escuchar mi opinión. Thank you for listening to my opinion.
Thank you very much. We have Charlie Irwin up next and Mr. Spillane, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name's Conrad. And we want a bigger playground and a bigger school. We love our teachers. And I've been learning German since I was five. By the way, I'm also six. So we want a bigger whole school and a bigger playground and here down he calls a room without room. And if we speak German, we get spiced mice dogs. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If Anna Horzdowski will come down and Mr. Irwin, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Charlie Irwin and I'm a ninth grade student at Highland Academy. I've attended Highland for three years and I'm here to speak in support of the potential relocation of Highland Academy Charter School's current location next door to Unaca Valley Elementary. This possible move proves to have a lot of likely benefits. One of the main benefits I see the most student support for is the gym in Unaca. The current way we implement gym to Highland is if the weather allows for it in our parking lot or by using our small multipurpose room. Our multipurpose room is in the parking lot. Sorry. Our multipurpose room is used as our cafeteria assembly and again as our gymnasium. We have used the space as we have very effectively, but it'd be much more sustainable to have a gymnasium made for physical education. Another thing I've seen a lot of support for is the outdoors area surrounding Unaca. Highland Academy already uses Unaca Valley space for our school's field day and outdoor specific intensives. If you relocated into Unaca Valley Elementary, we'd be in close proximity to that area we already use, including Russian Jack Park. With the outdoor space, Highland could begin to offer after school activities such as cross country running and cross country skiing. The staff is exposed to interest in the use of outdoor space, but especially the potential growth that Highland could experience. Unaca Valley has a larger space for students and staff, growing the possibility of growing our student enrollment. With the larger space, we are also able to use it further for subject specific classes and electives. This school, this move has many long-term benefits that would enhance the experience at our schools for students and staff. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Ella McGothier, if you can come down and Ms. Horzdowski, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Anna Horzdowski. I go to Chukiaak Elementary. I'm in fifth grade. Me and my friends did a campaign at our school to, to save Spanish immersion, our teachers, Ignite and middle school sports. I am in Ignite myself and Spanish immersion and I love Spanish immersion because you get to learn a lot and you get to learn a new language. And I love Ignite because you get to learn new things I probably wouldn't, wouldn't have learned till middle school or high school. Me, me and my friends got over 100 signatures from people who want to keep our, our programs in our school and our teachers, including the teachers. We got our principal to sign this and we really liked middle, and we even got the people who didn't even, who mostly like middle school sports or Ignite or just Spanish immersion. And many people liked all of them and we really like to keep them.
Thank you very much. And if you do want to hand that petition to Ms. Sullivan, she's right here. Anyone else that has handouts for the board or any papers, Ms. Sullivan receives all those for us. Candace Arima is next after Ms. McGothier. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Ella McGothier. I'm in fourth grade and I go to Chukiaak Elementary. I've been in the Spanish immersion program since kindergarten and I enjoy it very much. At first, learning a new language was hard, but the encouraging teachers helped me through when I didn't understand. In immersion, you don't just learn how to speak the language, but you also learn about geography, social studies and the history of Alaska. One thing I love about immersion is the arts and crafts projects. Most of the time, our projects are about the indigenous people of Alaska. Currently, we are creating 3D models about Alaskan tribes and writing about their culture. Spanish immersion is amazing. Every day, all of my teachers are well educated and teaches Spanish in ways that are fun and helps learn with confidence. I love the immersion program and I don't know what I would do without it. In addition to being in the Spanish immersion program, I'm also in Ignite. Over the last three years in Ignite, we have dissected a salmon and got to take out its organs. We also dissected owl pellets and got to take out the bones and glue the skeleton. Now in fourth grade, we are dissecting cow eyeballs and we are learning about the rainforest. We might dissect lizards next. Each activity we do in Ignite is a great lesson that teaches us something very interesting. I love going every Tuesday and being able, and being excited to see what we do next. Ignite is fun because we learn many things that help us in the future. I'm glad that Ignite is here to give us a new curiosity in the world. I'm thankful that both Ignite and immersion is available. I would love for you to save Ignite and immersion. They're my favorite classrooms, class, sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Candace Arima is next on our list, followed by Ella Weilas. And if Ms. Arima isn't here, Ms. Weilas will be followed by Aria Raidbank. I may not be saying that correctly and I'm sorry, R A I D M A E. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Ella Weilas. I'm a junior at Diamond High School and I would like to speak to you about why I do not support the proposed budget cuts for fiscal year 26. I serve as a historian for Diamond Student Government and have been as involved as possible in my school for the last three years. I have three varsity letters from Diamond in gymnastics and I grew up watching Diamond hockey games. I even learned how to walk in Ben Bookie Ice Arena. ASD's decision to eliminate hockey and gymnastics from high school sports would be detrimental to me as I begin my senior year next fall. After having some not so great experiences with coaching staff during my freshman and sophomore years of gymnastics, I've finally been able to make gymnastics my home this year. My coach, who is new to coaching high school this year, always told me that the gym was my place to be and to let go of everything outside of my safe space. Gymnastics did become my safe space this year. I found love and support in my teammates and coach and I found connections with gymnasts across ASD. To see a program that I have helped build be stripped away from me, it would be devastating, especially because my family and I cannot afford for a competitive training outside of the high school season. Additionally, cutting hockey from ASD would be damaging to me and my family. I grew up watching Diamond hockey and I've never known a world without it. Some of my best memories of my childhood were sitting ice rinks across Alaska, watching Diamond players do what we both loved. Hockey has brought my family together and united us as a community as well as a family through times of hardships such as the COVID-19 pandemic. Walking into the Menard Center on Saturday, knowing it could be the last high school hockey game I watched felt incredibly unfair. I don't know what I would do without these sports that have become so dear to me, but more importantly, I don't want to lose the skills they've taught me. Gymnastics has taught me perseverance, resilience, teamwork and discipline. Well, hockey has taught me how to be a part of a community, optimism and now advocacy. I urge you to save the sports that make it worth it for me and so many others across the district. Don't let me lose my home in the, in these sports and my opportunity to participate in the sport that I love more than anything. Save gymnastics, save hockey. Just by adequately funding these programs, you could be saving someone's life one day. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll touch back Candace Arima, if you're here and then followed by Aria Raidbank. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name's Aria. I'm 10 years old and I'm in fourth grade. My school is Turnigan Elementary and I'm in the Russian immersion program. I am here to fight for the right for Ignite again. I'm also here to save the Russian immersion program and talk about Battle of the Books. I should be at dance class or studying for Battle of the Books or even doing my homework. But instead, I'm here talking to you again. Battle of the Books is important because it gives you a chance to read books you never thought you would like before. It also helps you comprehend the books you read. Ignite is also very important because it challenges me with team building exercises. It gives me something to look forward to in school. Ignite gives me the opportunity to learn more advanced topics. That keeps me curious and interested in school. I've also read that you're trying to destroy Russian immersion. I dislike this idea because it would take away future opportunity like college, jobs, travel and even speaking to more people. I also like learning Russian culture and their holidays. But most important, learning Russian keeps me challenged and makes school more fun and interesting. Every year you threaten to take away something I love about my school. I hope this is the last time I have to do this. My parents said if you take away too much, I'm going to private school. I do not want to go to private school. I can't imagine life with, without these things. P.S. The governor will be hearing from me too.
Thank you. And we hope it's the last time you have to come tell us this to. Iona Snyder, followed by Sadie McWilliams. If you're in the room. Yeah, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Bonsoir, je m'appelle Sadie McWilliams et je suis en quatrième année à O'Malley dans le programme d'immersion français. Je suis ici pour vous encourager de continuer à soutenir le programme immersion et les profs. Je tenais avec une déficience sur ma jambe inférieure et je viens d'avoir ma treizième opération l'automne dernier. À chacun de ces chirurgies, mes camarades de classe, mes profs et le personnel de O'Malley ont été là pour m'aider à apprendre et me soutenir quand j'étais en difficulté. C'est vraiment un endroit spécial. Si nous ne pouvons pas augmenter le financement des écoles, nous allons perdre cinq super profs français. Je serai trop triste. Si on perd ses profs, on aura plus de programmes d'immersion. Nous ne sommes pas juste une école, nous sommes une famille. S'il vous plaît, ne nous séparez pas. Investissez en nous, les enfants, le futur d'Alaska. Merci.
Hello, my name is Sadie McWilliams and I am a fourth grader in the O'Malley Elementary French Immersion Program. I'm speaking in support of keeping immersion funding and our teachers. I was born with a lower limb deficiency and just had my 13th surgery this fall. Through every single one of my surgeries, my classmates, teachers and staff at O'Malley have been there to help me learn and support me when I was struggling. It is the kindest and most special place I have ever known. If we don't increase funding to our schools, we will lose five of those special, kind, amazing O'Malley teachers, which is the saddest thing I can think of. If we lose those teachers, we won't have an immersion program anymore. Learning to speak French is like a superpower and I can't imagine having to stop that journey. We're not just a school, we're a family. Please don't separate us. Please invest in us kids, Alaska's future. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Ella Harmeling, I want to touch back Iona Snyder, if you're in the room. And if not, Way, Wayina Yunes, if you want to come, be prepared. Yes, if you want to state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Bonjour tout le monde. Je m'appelle Ella Harmeling et je suis en quatrième année à l'école O'Malley. Je suis ici pour vous demander de garder ouvert notre école et notre programme d'immersion française. Apprendre français est une opportunité incroyable pour moi et mes amis de classe. Je sais que je parle pour tout le monde. Si ce programme se termine, on va être dévasté. Parler deux langues est important pour nous. Ça va ouvrir le monde et nous aider à connecter à d'autres cultures. S'il vous plaît, gardez ce programme français. Ce veut que mon petit frère et d'autres élèves puissent avoir le même occasion que moi. Je voudrais continuer à apprendre et grandir avec la langue et la culture française. Merci beaucoup.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ella Harmeling and I am in the fourth grade French immersion program at O'Malley Elementary. Hello, everybody. My name is Ella Harmeling and I am in the fourth grade French immersion program at O'Malley Elementary School. I'm speaking today in support of keeping the French program and our school open. Learning French has been such an amazing opportunity for me and my classmates. And I know I speak for all of us when I say we will be devastated if we lose this program. Learning French and becoming bilingual will open up a world of opportunities and give us the chance to connect with other cultures. Please, let's not take this program away from future students. Let's give them the same opportunity I've had to learn, grow, and connect with the world in only, and only, and only a way French immersion can offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Iona Snyder, followed by Waylina Unes. You have two minutes.
Can you hear me all right? Hello, my name is Iona Snyder and I just graduated from West High School with a seal of bilinguism in the Russian language. I also was diagnosed with sensory neural hearing loss in both ears when I was four months old and I've been wearing hearing aids in both ears since that time. I am currently working to save money and take a solo backpacking trip through Turkey and Georgia where I can practice my Russian skills. I am here to tell you guys about why you should not be touching the Heart of Hearing Program, the Listening, Learning, and Spoken Language Program at Willawa Elementary School. I'm opposed to ASD's decision to move the LSL program under the deaf umbrella at Russian Jack Elementary School because the LSL program taught me how to hear. As a heart of hearing student, being in the LSL program was the best decision my parents made for my childhood. Being hard of hearing is different from being deaf. I am not a deaf student. Had I gone to Russian Jack Elementary School and been taught to learn sign language and been taught to learn how to live in a deaf world, would have completely changed my life. The LSL program is the reason that I have a seal of bilinguism in Russian. The LSL program is the reason I graduated early. Without the LSL program, I would not be the girl I am today. I'm going to be springboard diving next year in college and because of the support I received as a young student, learning how to live in a hearing world, I am able to do these amazing opportunities. All thanks to my preschool teacher Cindy Ryan. Because of her, I will be able to have these amazing opportunities and I know I'm being redundant. But I just cannot emphasize enough, being hard of hearing is different from being deaf. Keep the programs separate, keep them alive, and keep them the same, please, I'm begging you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. William Romero, if you'll come forward. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
I'm Liliana Muniz. Members of the board, thank you for listening today. I'm here to testify for saving high school gymnastics. My name is Lily Muniz and I'm sixteen. I'm a junior at West Anglices High School and the varsity gymnastics captain under our coach Kea Tinksley. I've been doing gymnastics since I can remember and growing up, Coach Kea was someone I really looked up to. I didn't see her for three years due to COVID. Then, in my eighth grade year, I went to the West Freshman Fair and found out she was the head coach. I immediately signed up for high school gymnastics. Going into freshman year, I was very lost and I couldn't get myself to participate in any school-led activities other than gymnastics due to diagnosed anxiety and depression. Participating in gymnastics gave me an outlet, a safe space, with a safe adult to express myself and how I was feeling. A month into my freshman season, through the support from the people around me in gymnastics, I was able to seek help and I was able to get medication for what I was going for, going through. Kea has been coaching for nineteen years and has a lot of experience in the field. But her best attribute is showing so much passion and support for her girls, which I've witnessed from the other coaches as well. I met her at Arctic Gymnastics and I wouldn't have reconnected with her if it wasn't for the high school team. She started working at Arctic Gymnastics again since I've rejoined, since I've joined the high school gymnastics team and has even recommended me for my current job at the facility. Another great attribute of high school gymnastics is how the community gets together and volunteers to set up the gym at Diamond High School. Then taking it down at the end of the season, we single-handedly put everything together where it will be stored. We've single, hmm, but everything will be stored until the following year. It does not take any money or time to transport it. We have all the equipment we need to practice and compete. And it takes little to no maintenance. Cutting the sport would cause all that equipment to sit around with no use. My life has changed for the better numerous times through high school gymnastics.
Thank you for your testimony. Tova Crawford, if you'll come forward, Ms. Romero, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Leah Romero and I'm a senior at Service High School. I've been swimming for five and a half years now, but four of those years have been spent on the Service High Swim Team. I came here tonight with my club team, Aquatics Foundation of Alaska, to ask that you not cut high school swimming in your current budget. My current team, AFA, represents swimmers from Service, Southwest, Bartlett, and East. And we have come together tonight to prove that swimming is vital to ASD. A study done in the UK proves that swimming improves cardiovascular fitness, endurance, and lowers the risk of traumatic injuries. Additionally, it improves mental health and individuals' well-being. But further than that, ASD swim teams provide a unique community that I have yet to see matched in any of our school district's communities. I would not be who I am today without Coach Grant and my service swim team. They gave me the motivation, confidence, and willingness to succeed that got me through my worst days. Four years later, I feel that I've tried to return the favor by being a captain of that amazing swim team. Even though my time on the team is over now, my duty to this team requires to me that I testify and tell you tonight why high school swimming must remain. Please let there be a swim team for my little brother to find the things that I found in this team. Improved mental health, community, physical health improvement, and leadership are just a few of the benefits that ASD swim teams provide us. We recognize that your hands are tied and that you are out of money. We are writing to our legislators and to our governor to ask them to raise the BSA, but for now, please save our pools. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Charlotte Griffiths, if you'll come down, and Ms. Crawford, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
My name is Tova Crawford. I'm in second grade at Two Gats Optional. When I heard about the budget cuts, I offered my piggy bank to help. My mom said my voice is more important than my pennies, so I'm here to give you all the words I can, two minutes or less. I'm in the Ignite program for gifted students and I absolutely love it. Ignite challenges me to think about the big problems and come up with fresh ideas. I don't want to lose a special program that helps me grow and flex my brain. Two Gats may lose two of our eleven teachers. This would devastate our school's learning environment. Our classes have two grades in each room and losing two teachers with fourth class sizes to have as many as forty-four students per room. Can you imagine forty elementary kids in one classroom? Most students wouldn't be able to focus and learn in that environment. Two Gats may also lose our librarian Amy and Nurse Maya. Librarian Amy fosters a love of reading in every student. Our library is the heart of our school and I can't imagine it without Amy. Nurse Maya is always there to help with my hearing aids or a scraped knee. Losing them part-time would be hard for all of us. You may have noticed that I wear hearing aids. I am hard of hearing and I'm thriving because of ASD's great teachers and support services. My family and I are running ASL thanks to family sign at the school for the deaf and hard of hearing at Russian Jack. This program is a great resource for students and families across the district. Please remember, the decisions you make affect the experiences and opportunities for kids like me. Tonight, I ask you, please do not cut Ignite programs. Do not take away two teachers from Two Gats Optional. Do not take away our librarian and nurse. Do not cut funding for the school for the deaf and hard of hearing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. And if Knox Voorhees will come down, and Ms. Griffiths, if you will state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Griffith and I'm a junior at South Anglices High School. I'm coming here today for the second time, along with many of my peers who are waiting in the lobby right now, to ask that you do not cut out the high school swimming program or any other sport in the district. Athletics, specifically swimming, has been the center of my life for almost ten years now. Whether it be learning how to swim through lessons or competing on a club comp team, my end goal has always been to represent and compete for my high school. Being able to compete on a high school team has been a huge deal for me and has really changed my high school experience for the better. Since the swimming season starts before school does, each year I have been able to go into the school year with a large community of people that I fortunately am able to get to know better as the season goes on. This community has been the foundation of my high school experience and through it, I have made lifelong friendships with people that I would not have met otherwise. As well as the social aspect of being on a team, learning how to swim is a legitimate safety concern, especially living in a state with one of the highest drowning rates in the country. Because of my experience with swimming, I've been able to use my knowledge to give back to the community by teaching swimming lessons to younger kids. Many of my swim teammates also began to teach lessons and lifeguard for community events because they were able to learn these skills through high school swimming. Since we do not have a pool at South, every day during the high school season, my teammates and I drive ourselves over to Service High to swim before school starts. High school swimmers are some of the most dedicated athletes and students that I know. We are dedicated to both our sports as well as our studies. As a soon-to-be senior, I'm now counting on my next swim season to help secure college scholarships. If the swim and dive program is cut, my chances of getting those will be severely lowered. I'm asking you, please keep the high school swimming open to all students in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. If Aria Logan will come down, and Mr. Voorhees, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Knox Voorhees. If we don't get our new shoe, um, we, Roca Schula might not be here in a couple of years. And my shoe is named Rogue.
Is that all your testimony? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. And Sky Barnes, if you will come down, and Ms. Logan, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Aria Logan. I'm a fifth grader in the Spanish immersion program at Chiggyak Elementary School. I would like to talk today about the proposed cuts to Ignite immersion teachers and middle school activities. I have been in Ignite since third grade and I have a sister in second grade who just started this year. During my time in Ignite, I have learned things that I might not have known until middle school. Ignite has kept me engaged in school because it has given me a challenge to look forward to each week. As an immersion student, I have had a chance to learn a new language, speak to people from other, uh, from other Spanish-speaking countries and learn about different countries like Spain, Mexico, Venezuela, and many more. I like learning about new cultures and new places. The immersion program has opened my eyes beyond where I live. If you cut these programs now, the students like my sister who are in the middle of the program will not get the same educational opportunities as I have and my amazing Spanish teachers who I have loved might lose their jobs. Middle school sports are important to me because I'm going to be in middle school next year and I'm going to want to do some of these activities. Keep into mind that if you cut these programs now, you can't let, you can't get them back later, even if the state legislature provides more money.
You still have thirty seconds.
I'm asking for you to keep these programs in the budget by working with the state legislators to get more funding instead of cutting programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And if Landon Autumn will come down, Ms. Barnes, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sky Barnes and I'm a sixth grader at Highland Academy. And I'm here to talk to you about why I believe our school should move into the Nunaka Building. I've thought of several reasons why this move would make a big difference for all of us at Highland Academy. One of the biggest things I've noticed is that many of my classrooms don't have windows and that makes it hard to focus and feel connected to the outside world. The Nunaka Building has windows in every classroom, which would bring in natural light, help improve our mood, and make our learning environment more comfortable. Right now, our PE classes are held in the parking lot, which is dangerous because cars could, cars could drive through while we're trying to play. At the Nunaka Building, there's a gym where we could have PE inside away from traffic. This would help keep us safe and we'd be able to use PE equipment like volleyballs and basketballs. The gym would allow us to have better sports classes no matter the weather outside. We all know how important it is to get some fresh air and exercise during the day. Currently, our outside space is very small and it's, it's a paved fenced area that's smaller than half a basketball court. But the Nunaka Building has a playground and a field where we could play soccer, run around, enjoy lunch, and recess outside. This would give us more space to be active and help us stay healthy and organized throughout the day. Another great reason to move to the Nunaka Building, wait. The Nunaka Building has a kitchen. We could use this for cooking classes where we could learn the basics of cooking, which is an important skill in life. Also, the kitchen could be used by the PTSO to support our school hosting events, fundraisers, and activities that bring our community together. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Marina Petuminos, if you'll come down, and Mr. Allen, if you'll state your name for the record, you have ten minutes.
Hello, my name is Landon Autumn. I am in first grade at Roca Schula. Please help our school move into Lakehead Elementary. We would have a bigger playground and more space to run and play. We would have, um, we would have, we would have, we would have a bigger classroom. We would have a lunchroom. We would have a bigger library. My school could use the extra money for students. I love Roca Schula because I like my teachers.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I want to touch back just to see if Candace Arima is in the audience, Candace Arima. And if not, Marina Petuminos, I'm not saying that correctly. Is next, followed by Roland Ivory, if you will come down. Thank you, followed by Devon Hall, if you will come forward. State your name for the record, you have two minutes. If you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Devon Hall. I'm a sophomore at Service High School and I've been a member of the varsity swim team for two years. With any luck, I'll graduate with four years of varsity swimming experience. Given my experience on the swim and dive team, it's no surprise that I'm here to speak to you today. Your proposed budget cuts for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year will undoubtedly eliminate vital opportunities for students across the district. School sports are not just a hobby for our students. They're an, they're an essential part of our lives. For some, they're the only outlet we have, furthering our physical and mental health, providing a platform for teamwork, leadership, and friendship, teaching skills we could not grasp in just the classroom alone, such as time management and discipline. For most, it is the highlight of our high school experience and for a select few, swimming is the only chance we will have at affording college with, with scholarship opportunities being, being provided to dedicated students who have worked their whole lives for opportunity like this. For other high school seas, for other high school students, high school season is the only opportunity they'll ever have to participate in a sport. Club sports are often expensive, making them an extreme privilege for many students, especially those in low-income situations, something many ASD students are faced with. Furthermore, cutting middle school sports does not create an environment that furthers, that supports further physical activity in high school and beyond. According to the Alaska Food Council, one in three children in Alaska is overweight or obese. Childhood obesity is most likely to occur between the ages of eleven and fifteen or middle school years. Does taking away more physical activity from children who are genetically and geographically at a disadvantage to become overweight seem like a wise decision to you? We understand you're in a difficult position, but sports are not just a fun hobby that can be sacrificed for academics. They're an integral part of our lives, a pace, a place for growth and development. We urge you to make the right decision and to continue to support our school programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And Mr., Mr. Ivory, if you'll come have a seat and state your name for the record, you have two minutes. And if, hey, Leona Boyd, Boywin, I'm sorry, is here, if you'll come down, go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Roland Ivory. I would like Roca to move, Roca to have a new school. I would like for my brothers to also have a new school and a good one. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Liam Lathrop, if you'll come down, and Ms. Boywin, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Kaylianna and I am in eighth grade. I've been going to Highland Academy charter school for three years now. One of the things I love about Highland is that all the students know the teachers and all the teachers know the students. I have three reasons why I think Highland Academy should be relocated to Nunaka Valley Elementary School. Moving buildings would be very beneficial. Moving buildings would be very beneficial when it comes to space. For an example, if we had intensives like NYO and carpentry, that both needed the commons, we wouldn't have enough space. But with a bigger building, we would have enough space. With the building that we are in now, space is very limited for many things such as gym or our cafeteria. I think that moving buildings would make it easier for student leader, for student leadership when it comes to planning events like lock-ins, prom, or any other event that requires a bigger space. With the building that our school is in now, we only have a big room that is used for eating and gym. This leaves kids having to exercise on if there are messes made during lunch. By moving buildings, this would separate food and exercise. Lastly, I would like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about why I think Highland should relocate to Nunaca Valley Elementary School.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I want to touch back, Marina Petuminos, if you're here, you're on the list, um Liam Rathrop, Lathrop. And yes, if you'll come state your name for the record, you have two minutes to testify. You want to get the microphone right in front of you. You can pull it down a little bit. We, we all have to take a minute sometimes to sort of gather ourselves, but if you'll start with your name.
My name is Liam Lathrop. Second grade. I go to second grade in Roca Shula. And I think what moving to Lakewood is a great idea because we could have a bigger playground and more more space for the kids to have fun because the playground is usually really crowded. And I wouldn't like the good teachers to go down the drain. Thank you for your time. Bye bye.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Um, we have Luca and Quinn DeLong as our next two testifiers. And state your name, you have ten minutes.
I'm in first grade at Roca Shula. And I would like m- more teachers for for to help more kids. And I would like a bigger playground to play on. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Next, we have Quinn DeLong followed by Roland Hall. If you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Quinn DeLong and I'm a fifth grade student from O'Malley Elementary. O'Malley, O'Malley has had a huge impact to my life and I've been in the French immersion program since kindergarten. I've loved every moment. The teachers I've been, have been incredible, but one in particular made a lasting impact. Miss Colinay, my third grade French teacher. He made learning fun, kept, kept us engaged and knew how to balance being a teacher and a friend. He taught me to think beyond myself to appreciate, appreciate appreciate other cultures and languages. He made school exciting and I can't thank him enough for that. But the future of French immersion programs is uncertain. If it's shut down or if it's shut down or teachers' positions will be cut. My 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 great teachers and many other teachers like Miss Colinay may have to leave. And the future students won't get the same opportunities added and that won't be fair. Programs like this give students a great education and I hope this can continue for many years. S'il vous plante, sauver mon école et d'autres écoles comme O'Malley pour que d'autres enfants suivent vont avoir la même chance que moi. Sans le programme d'immersion, sans le suivant, pas possible. Prisant avoir le futur élève de ASD. Merci pour votre temps. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Uh Noah Ottenwiler, if you will come forward and Mr. Hall, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Bonjour, je m'appelle Rowan Hall et je suis en cinquième grade à O'Malley Elementary. Je suis là parce que je suis inquiet pour mon école, surtout l'immersion française. Hello, my name is Rowan Hall and I'm a fifth grader at O'Malley Elementary. I'm here because I'm worried about my school, especially the French immersion program. I've been in it since kindergarten and I've very much enjoyed it. It's more than just learning words, it's learning about another culture and it's even made me better at other things like reading, math, writing, and problem solving. My little brother is in second grade and is also in the immersion program. He learns differently and a lot of the way the immersion teachers teach helps him a lot more. If you get rid of the French program, you're getting away, you're getting rid of a way of teaching that works really well. If you take away five out of the seventeen teachers that are at O'Malley, the class sizes will grow and we won't get the attention and room that we need to focus. If you take away our teachers and we lose our program, you're take, you're basically taking away a part of our community. I've been with the same classmates for the last six years and we feel like we belong together. If you cut the program, there's also a risk of O'Malley closing. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Sam Pearson, if you'll come forward and um if you'll state your name for the record, you have ten minutes.
Hi, my name is Noah Ottenwiler. I'm in the fifth grade at Roca Shula. And Roca Shula is at risk of being cut. I'm here to talk about how special Roca Shula is and how we can make it even better. Roca serves four hundred eighty students and we have some of the best teachers who really support us. They create a place where all, where we all feel welcomed and supported. Our teachers work hard every day to help us learn and grow. Our students surpass the math and ELA benchmarks, even spending half of our day speaking only German. One of my favorite teachers is Hair Downey. He teaches music and leads awesome clubs after school. The music program is a lot of fun and helps us learn teamwork, discipline, and creativity. Him, his program, and all the other teachers at Roca go above and beyond. It helps make our school a special place for everyone. But there's one problem right now. We spend almost twenty percent of our budget on rent for our school building. That's a lot of money. We can't afford to keep spending that much money on rent. If we don't get the chance to move to Lakewood, we will lose many of our wonderful teachers who make Roca so outstanding. Roca Shula is a great part of the community and by moving into Lakewood, we can keep growing and stay at a great school where everyone is supported and cared for. Danke dass Sie zugehört haben. Bitte denken Sie darüber nach, was ich gesagt habe.
Thank you for your testimony, Ty. Uh Ava Kalsath, if you'll come forward and Mr. Pearson, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Sam, Sam, Samuel Earl Pearson. I came here to say that I love the French immersion program. It has taught me so much over the past five years. I have, I've had great teachers that have come from France to teach me like Mr. Colinay and my English teachers have been pretty great too. Please keep the French immersion program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. So Ryan, if you'll come down and Ms. Kalsath, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes. You want to get the microphone right in front of your mouth. You can pull it down.
My name is Ava Kalsath and I am in third grade at Roca Shula. I am here to support your recommendation to move Roca Shula to Lakewood. In one hundred and ninety-four days, we don't have a least for our school moving to Lakewood. Means for my classmates and I that we will have a bigger music room and a bigger library. I could not have to make my lunch every day. And we can have a bigger classrooms. It is very dis- distracting doing small group work in the hallways right now. I love all my teachers and moving to Lakewood means that they can continue their great work. Thank you for making the right choice for our future. Sincerely, Ava Kalsath.
Thank you very much. If Zaylee Molenax will come down and Ms. Ryan, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Um, hi, my name is Zoe Ryan. Um, bonjour, je m'appelle Zoe et je suis en sixième année au collège de Gongview. Hello, my name is Zoe and I'm a sixth grade grader currently going to Gongview Middle School. If the budget cuts go through, Gongview will lose nine teachers, which is equivalent to about a grade worth of teachers and one of our two beloved vice principals. Another example is that all of our before and after school sports and activities get taken away from the kids if school, if our school doesn't get funded. I myself is, are, is on the, am on the debate team. Last year, my school won the state varsity championship. Having a great varsity team with my friends, our goal is to at least make it to the state championship. But with, but before graduating to high school, but without funding, I'm not sure that goal will ever be realized. When I was in elementary school, I was in the, I was in the Ignite program. Last year, we dissected sheep hearts and in fourth grade, we bu- built robots and we raced them through a maze. Taking away Ignite would be taking away new and fun opportunities for kids. Um, my sisters go to O'Malley and are in the immerse, French immersion program. My eight-year-old sister is currently in the French immersion program and she is dyslexic. With the French program, she is not only learning to read and write in English, but also in French. My six-year-old sister is also benefiting and will soon be able to read and write in English and French. If um, but the budget cuts are made, all um, everything will be lost. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. If Millie DeLong will come down and Ms. Molenax, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening, members of the school board, fellow students, and families. My name is Zaylee Molenax. I'm a sophomore currently attending Diamond High School. I'm here tonight to advocate to keep the sport of swimming as one of the high school athletic programs. Now, I said the sport of swimming, but swimming is so much more than that. It is a strong community that positively impacts every single person who decides to participate. Swimming has many benefits besides just the initial exercise that the swimmers who partake in it receive. Swimming teaches its athletes discipline, teamwork, and resilience, all of which are important lessons that we will use for the rest of our lives. Speaking of the rest of our lives, swimming is one of the few sports that you can do ages two to one hundred. Anyone, any age is able to swim if they are given the opportunity to learn, that is. Cutting this sport would prevent students from learning a life skill that is good for their mental and physical well-being. Also, swimming may be seen as an individual sport and while it is mainly focused on personal growth, I have not participated in another sport where the sense of friendship and camaraderie is so strong. I have made forever friends through this sport and if it wasn't for high school swimming, then I would not have met such a wonderful and equally hardworking group of people. Also, high school swimming gives students the chance to learn to swim and exercise without the cost of joining a club team. Taking away this sport also robs swimmers from a multitude of opportunities. It opens doors to swim in college and receive scholarships that can be an exciting factor for many swimmers on where to go to school. Without this program, we are left at a huge disadvantage to swimmers from other states. Additionally, swimming boosts cognitive abilities and brain health, which leads to an improvement in school as well. Swimming also creates many job opportunities that we can put on our college resumes, like lifeguarding and teaching swim lessons. And many of the Diamond Swim and Dive athletes from this last season are teaching swim lessons at Swim America, where an average of two hundred and forty kids a week are taught a life-saving skill. And that would not have been possible without the employers coming from the swim team. I myself came straight here from lessons and I am so glad grateful that my sport has given me the ability to have a job that works with my busy schedule as a student athlete. I and the entirety of the Alaska swimming community plead you to please consider the benefits of the sport of swimming for the athletes and our district. Please keep our beautiful sport alive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Um, I have Joan, and I, I can't read the last name. It was handwritten on the speaker sheet. Or, I'm sorry, or or one, yeah, okay. And uh, Ms. DeLong, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
I'm Joigo. Hello, my name is Millie. I am in the third grade French immersion at O'Malley. When I first joined French immersion, I didn't understand what they said in kindergarten, but now I do. What I love about my French teacher, Madame Melody, is that she loves art, science, and painting. If O'Malley went away, I wouldn't, I would miss my friends, the ice skating rink, and the playground. If O'Malley didn't have French immersion, I would, I wouldn't have seen my French teachers. So I'm asking you tonight not to take any French teachers away from O'Malley. S'il te plaît, aidez-moi pour sauver mon école. Merci beaucoup.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And if Luke Reardon will come down and Juan, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Uh, good morning, everybody. My name is Joan Silveo Renz Jr., uh, a senior at Diamond High School. And to think that next year might change for the worst feels like the worst. Since freshman year, I felt distraught by the thought of what high school would turn into, as if I was going to enter as the geek who gets singled out of his class. But how wrong I was. Mr. Wheeler's, my student government advisor for three years, constantly inspired me to become the courageous individual I am. Now in hopes of speaking out for others, which I'm doing right now. Um, our librarian, Ms. Melikin, despite not knowing me, my first year was always willing to have a genuine conversation with me. The orchestra program and orchestra director, uh, Dr. Pacella, thank you, shout out to Big Dog, urged me to take things outside of my own perspective and question my own blind spots. We must continue the life of our school district. We must see that we are not just schools, but well interconnected communities. To cut off teachers who've served generations of students, librarians who've served us in countless ways far beyond the book, and programs that give students an environment for their creativity to run free, feels like too abnormal of a missing puzzle piece. Cutting off this much bulk of classroom teachers and bringing librarians and hypothetically, the fine arts program would unarguably make next year feel like the depressed students seen from Captain Underpants. Some kids might be moved into a new school and may not settle in as comfortably as others. On one possible circumstance, teachers have to wait to see whether they get um, cut from the district or not, depending on if they have enough students in their roster for their class. It feels as if this year may turn cataclysmic, but I still have hope. Hopeful that our community stays strong and can get through the thick and thin of it, just like the COVID pandemic. And just like my school motto says, stay happy, stay healthy, and of course, stay golden. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And would you spell your last name for the record?
My last name is Orenze, O-R-E-N-S-E.
Very much. I appreciate that. And if Cora Mo can come forward and Mr. Reardon, if you will state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Uh, hello, my name is Luke Reardon. I'm a tenth grader at West Ancre High School. Um, I'm here to support my swim team. So one activity that I find particularly meaningful is my high school swim team. It has positively impacted my life in multiple ways. I joined the swim team when I started high school in ninth grade. I was nervous at the start because I wasn't a very good swimmer and really struggled. Um, I also did not know anyone else on the team. Um, and like had no friends, but as I became more comfortable and got stronger and made friends, um, I've become faster. Um, but more importantly, becoming a strong swimmer was becoming part of a team and meeting people, making friends. Being part of the swim team has taught me, um, or being part of the swim team has allowed, has fostered a sense of community at school that is unlike anything else. Um, I've met many people um, and friends that I would not have met had I not been on the team. Um, swimming also taught me perseverance because even though I was hesitant to do it and struggled to practice, I decided to stick with it because I knew it would be worth it. Um, it was worth it. Swimming hasn't, swimming um, has not only helped me make new friends, get in shape, and be more physically active. Um, swimming inspired me to start leading a healthier life and to, um, yeah, can and to participate in more activities and team sports. Um, swimming also taught me that gains do not happen overnight and that progress takes time and effort to achieve. While, while I'm still not particularly fast, I know that if I continue to put in the effort, I will be. Um, please do not cut the high school swim and dive programs as they mean a lot to many, to many students, including myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. If Shane Dixon will come down and Cora Mo, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Suraspete, меня зовут Cora Mo. That's Russian for hello, my name is Cora and I am a fourth grader at Turnigan Elementary. I was here I was here last year and I wish I didn't have to come here again. Please keep the current programs funded at my school. I am in the Ignite program, Russian language immersion and choir. And last week, I went to the citywide Battle of the Books battle where our team got first place. I would rather study for Battle of the Books right now than be here, but I heard we might not even have Battle of the Books next year if I don't advocate. In two years, I'm going into middle school. I hope to play sports at school instead of making my parents search for good sports teams, middle schoolers. In addition, as part of the student council, we have written welcome letters to students at Lakewood Elementary. I am very proud of my school. My fourth grade Russian teacher, Olga Vestina, has recently been nationally recognized for her work with Russian immersion. Also, why I like Ignite is that it's fun, but also challenging. These programs should be available for Lakewood students as well. And not only Russian immersion students, we, or not only Russian immersion needs saving, I also support other immersions. If I did not have these things in my school, it would not be as fun and I would not learn as much. My little brother Martin is five years old and in kindergarten at Turning In with me and he is looking forward to doing these things when he's older. It would be sad if he could not do the same programs I liked so much. Please support a budget that keeps these programs at my school.
Thank you very much for your testimony. If Peyton Curtis will come down and Mr. Dixon, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Shane A. Dixon. I am a junior at Highland Academy Char School and I want to take a moment to request NUNACCA for our new school building. I originally came to Highland in the sixth grade and I want to better my school for future students in my community. I would like to start with our commons room. It is about half the size of the NUNACA gym and it is where we hold assembly, P E and lunch. For assemblies, it is far too small of a space for our whole school to fit in, with us often having to take chairs from other rooms just to pack all the students in and even then it's shoulder to shoulder all the way down. As for P E, they have to move these benches out of the commons and back in every single time, taking time off of their physical education and activities. Lunch happens midday and afterwards it's often quite a mess with the janitors not coming till after school hours, forcing our P E students to either roll around in mass or head outside. As for outside, we have two areas. Our first is a fenced-off area which we call the cage. It is parking lot, thus still has a curb on it, which means we will trip or roll our ankles moving up or down the area. It is also not that big, almost the same size as the commons, forcing us into the front parking lot. It is a very high-traffic zone and dangerous for play and there's often a lot of vehicles coming through. And a small personal story I would like to share while I still have time is I am dual enrollment with Highland and King Tech. And one of the times while leaving on the bus towards King Tech, a ball, a ball got kicked out of the parking lot into the street and under the bus where it got crushed while we were leaving. Ultimately, I think the school is too small for high scores and unsafe for play. I would like to.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, sir.
And Peyton, um, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Peyton Curtis. I'm a junior at West Anchorage High School and a third-year swimmer on the West Swim Team. I'm standing here to discuss the impact that swimming has on high school students as well as the community of Anchorage. As a student athlete, I pride myself on my success in and out of the classroom and pool. I'm an IB diploma student and in the top three percent of my class at West and I don't believe I could be as academically successful as I am without my opportunity to go to swim practice every day. Swimming is a critical in relieving the many feelings of stress and anxiety that consume the average student. Countless research has been conducted to prove that release of endorphins, serotonin and dopamine also helps you feel more at ease. Swimming is more than just a sport. Alaska has the highest drowning rate in the nation with the greatest cause of drowning being lack of swimming ability. In a state full of lakes and rivers, swimming is a critical life skill that needs to be offered in our schools. Eliminating swimming will hurt the kids that need it most. Those that can't afford the considerable expense of sending their kids to swim lessons or joining club swim programs. Additionally, high school swimming is significantly cheaper than private clubs permitting more students to participate in it. The three-month season costs two hundred dollars. There are only four club teams in the Anchorage area with the cheapest costing two and a half times as much. High school swimming increases the accessibility to the sport to those who may not have the chance otherwise. Of the speakers here, me and my fellow high school swimmers here have recognized countless children running around who we have taught to swim and learn to swim programs. Swimming is one of the most affordable and accessible sports. Everybody gets to participate from novices to state champions. Two weeks ago, after ASC short-stated announcement about the proposal to cut swimming, I started a petition that just within twenty-four hours collected over one thousand signatures as well as countless shares, comments and promotions. If that's not passion for your sport, then I don't know what is. Budgets must be controlled, but cuts that make children less physically safe, less academically successful and less able to contribute to society run contrary to the fundamental mission of any school district. The cut to swim program would be to abandon the core mission of ASD, which says educating all students for success in life loses credibility when they are cutting programs.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And I want to touch back real quick to see if, um, Cadence Arema is present? Or Marina Petruinos? And not seeing either, that brings us to the conclusion of our student testimony. Um, and the feeling that, that we really need more swimmers in our, in our population. Um, students really done an outstanding job at testimony. We deeply appreciate you taking the time and coming tonight. I'm gonna ask for a ten-minute recess for the board to take a short break and we will come back and resume testimony. Thank you.
If four members will return to their seats. And we will continue, we do have one more student testifier, Amelia Samuel, if you'll come forward. Thank you for coming forward, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
My name is Amelia Samuel, I'm in eighth grade and I'm asking you not to move to listening and spoken language program from Willowaw to Russian Jack. I started school at Willowaw Elementary in the Listening and Spoken Language Classroom, where I learned to get ready for kindergarten and advocate for myself. I've been in a general education classroom where I've made lots of friends who have natural hearing. As you can see, I don't need an interpreter and I'm fully independent in my ability to learn in a general education. I hope one day to be a teacher because I'll get to teach many kids from all backgrounds so that they can have the same chance of being successful as I've had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Moving to parents that have students in the audience that need to testify and get home, we'd like to start with Amy Bobic, followed by Catherine Smith. And if you can state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello everyone, my name is Amy Bobic, and this is my sign name. So I am here to talk about the proposed budget cuts specifically focusing on two positions for the Alaska State School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. The school counselor and the intervention coach positions. When compared with other schools in our district, our school is very small but unique. We work with the deaf and hard of hearing children ages three all the way up to twenty-two, all over the state of Alaska. Did you know that deaf and hard of hearing is considered a low incident disability? That means it is not common to work with deaf and hard of hearing students and they need specialized services and professionals to support their needs in the classroom. More than ninety percent of deaf and hard of hearing children are born to hearing parents. Most of those parents have never met a deaf person and they don't know sign language. That means a majority of deaf and hard of hearing children do not have access to a visual language at birth. Many of our deaf and hard of hearing children often enter school with limited language skills, which greatly impacts their communication, social, academic skills, along with developing appropriate behavioral skills. This is where our school community can come together to support every deaf and hard of hearing child and their families in our state. We have a wonderful team of professionals trained to address the unique challenges of our teaching for deaf and hard of hearing children. Our school is so small that our teachers teach combo classes. For example, for one year I was teaching pre-K all the way to first grade by myself in the same classroom, which makes it even more challenging to address the students' needs. Our school is also spread across multiple sites. That means our students have limited access to signing peers and role models at school. We greatly rely on our counselor and our intervention coach to help us teach and support all of our students' learning needs. Our school counselor and intervention coach have already given their testimony in sign language. They are both fluent in American Sign Language. They are amazing role models for our students, taking away both of these positions increase the burden of our teachers to juggle everything on our own without any support. Their skills in highly specialized positions are irreplaceable. I don't see anyone else in AKSD and the district doing their jobs on a daily basis. And I want to add and encourage any of you on the school board, please come to our school and see our amazing students, staff, community, and families. Please come and see for yourselves the amazing work that is happening with our counselor and school intervention coach. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And if Courtney Horazdowski will come forward and Ms. Smith, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Smith. I am a proud kinder mom of a Rixial student. His name is Conrad. He is now six years old. And he's been doing this since he's been five. I want to say that as an immersion school, the German immersion program strives to promote the seal of belligerency that the state of Alaska has recognized. The Rixial teachers and staff encourage our students and attain the skills that are attractive to future employers and post-secondary education institutions with our, within our evolving world. We're only a fraction. We're only a fraction speaks, reads, and comprehends a second language well enough to use it in their everyday lives. Our students are performing above average and outperforming other schools in the district. With moving to Lake Hood, it will provide the program room to grow and support our community and our students' futures. The alleviation of the rent would allow the APC board to reallocate funds for hiring teachers, counselors, even though Herr Vincent Lang does an amazing job. There would be a real library, not just a nook, a real playground with grassy fields, basketball courts, not just rocks in their pockets. And I'm sure older students would enjoy more activities outside during their recess other than a playground. A gym would be nice where they can enjoy PE recess during windy and frigid cold days. A lunchroom where they can eat comfortably, not in their snow gear. And additional lunchrooms.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. I would like to also share with you all here tonight my appreciation for the teachers and the staff who deliver efficiency and effectively a persistent commitment to educating our students constantly during the challenges they have incurred. Thank you guys, I do hope you vote yes for Rixial moving.
Thank you for your testimony. And if, when Willis can come forward, you should pronounce your name, and you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Courtney Horazdowski. I have three students at Chugiak Elementary and one coming up behind them. I'm not going to spend time telling you how much I love my school or because that's why I'm here. I understand this is a proposal based on the state's allocation. I'm also talking to my state legislators. But I do want to say that I think that the Anchorage School District should focus on, I don't know what the processes are of working with the legislature, the timing. I know the timing between the legislature's timeline and the district and the muni's timeline just causes this fire drill every year. We're going to cut programs because we don't know what the budget is. The legislature just got into session, so they don't have time to fix it before then. So if there's any formal outreach process, work group, whatever that can get with them to kind of solve some of those just surface level problems that could keep us from having this fire drill to have to rally and fight for our programs every year. That would be a great morale boost, I think, to parents, to teachers, the teachers we want to keep here, all of that. And I wonder what other kinds of year-over-year cost-cutting, long-term programs could be put into effect to not just react based on what we think the legislature might give us, but what can we proactively do to cut costs in some of these programs? I have questions about some of the the right sizing. It seems that every year there are about six schools on the list, one or two gets cut. It's my understanding that one of the schools in our area that didn't get cut is only going to, under this budget, have six teachers for K through five next year. And how, one, how big are those classes going to be? And two, is it really economically feasible to keep a school open? Our school is slated to lose four teachers. That will destroy our immersion program, which has been around for thirty years. And I am out of time, and so I will leave it at that. I could talk much longer.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And if Eric Voorhees can come down, Mr. Willis, you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Thank you, President Holloman and members of the board. My name is Lem Willis and I'm an ASD graduate. I'm a parent of an ASD graduate and a parent of a current student. And I'm in my twenty-first year teaching for ASD. I am fully invested in the success of our public schools. I recognize that the budget shortfall exists because of the failure of the legislature and the governor to provide funding to keep up with inflation. However, I have significant concerns with the ASD budget as proposed. I'm very concerned by the cuts to middle school and high school activities. While calling these extracurricular activities make it sound like they are something extra, they are in fact central to our mission to educate all students for success in life. Activities build community, teach teamwork and leadership, and connect our students to their schools. This board has expressed severe concern over student absenteeism. It will only get worse if we cut the activities that encourage some of our most vulnerable students to attend school. Not all families can afford comp sports. School sports provide equitable access to the great learning opportunities of being on a team and encourage all students to be physically active. I'm also greatly concerned by the massive increase in PTR proposed in this budget. This year I have a hundred and fifty students. Increasing PTR by four means an average increase of twenty students for secondary teachers like me. That's twenty more essays to grade every time I assign one in one of my AP classes. That's twenty more students to get to know and try to meet their unique needs. That's twenty more families to communicate with regularly. That's a thirteen percent increase in my student load, a thirteen percent increase in my workload. And yet there is no corresponding increase in teacher compensation. This budget is being balanced on the back of classroom teachers. Even if the legislature comes through with funding later this spring, the teachers whose spots have been cut will either have moved schools or taken a job elsewhere for next year. The single best thing we can do to improve student outcomes is having quality teachers in every classroom. But quality isn't cheap. Invest in students, invest in teachers, and find other areas of the budget to cut. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If Nan Voorhees can come forward and Mr. Voorhees, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Eric Voorhees. Dear members of the ASD school board and district leaders, my wife and I are proud parents of two ROK students, a third grader and a kindergartner. The ROK's future is dire if we don't, if we remain in our current non-ASD building. We're building cost account for about twenty percent of our, of the budget. It's not financially sustainable for ROK to remain in the current building if we don't move to an ASD-owned building. If this doesn't happen, there's a chance ROK won't be around in the years to come, but now's a chance to make a change. There's a solution that will, that will allow ROK to remain financially stable and a strong ASD school, a school that houses nearly five hundred students as Alaska's only independently chartered language immersion program, and a school that surpasses ASD math and language, language goals. And that's moving to the Lake Hood School Building. Purely from a financial perspective, moving to Lake Hood will save ROK one million dollars a year, one million dollars a year. In addition, ROK would also have a building that's fifty percent bigger for more education space, a standalone kitchen and lunchroom, and their own dedicated library. ROK has been advocating for ourselves for many months, and this is not the first time you've heard from the ROK community. I hope that our advocacy and situation are acknowledged. I feel strongly that moving ROK to the Lake Hood building is in the best interest of ROK and ASD, and I hope you feel the same. I ask that you make your decisions as timely as possible so we can plan for our future. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Alyssa Logan will come down and Ms. Voorhees, if you'll state your name for the record, you have ten minutes.
I'm Alyssa Logan.
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Logan. I am a teacher at Chugiak High School, but more importantly, I am a parent of two Chugiak Elementary students, one of whom you heard testify earlier today, and ultimately I'm here to support her. My daughter Aria asked me Friday night to come testify here completely of her own volition because she was concerned about the programs that she has been lucky enough to be a part of. It's devastating to me that our students have, it's become normalized for our students that they have to come and testify to support the programs that they are a part of. We must do better for our kids. While I appreciate the tough spot that our board is in due to the failure of our legislature to act, I want to encourage you to focus on working with the legislature to raise the BSA. We've heard a lot about how we need to encourage school choice in the last few months and years from the state level. And my husband and I made a choice for the school that we wanted to send our children to. And I wonder why our school choice is less important than others because we chose to send our kids to a public school rather than a private school. In the meantime, once these programs are cut, they can't be brought back if the legislature provides more funding. You can't get visas in time for Spanish-speaking native, Spanish native speakers. So I urge you to be conscientious about this as you're developing the balanced budget that's required by law. And to everyone that's here, I applaud you for showing up to support your schools. But without a change in the BSA, we'll all be back here next year, even if the board is able to find a way to save these programs for a year. But without a change in the BSA, we'll all be back here next year, even if the board is able to find a way to save these programs for a year. So my daughter, Aria, and I have already talked about our plans for how to approach legislatures and push to pass HB sixty-nine and increase the BSA by making phone calls and testifying again with the legislature. And I hope you all can bring this energy to them too, the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Amanda Thompson, I want to touch back Nan Voorhees, if you're in the audience. Uh, if not, uh, Ms. Thompson is next, followed by Bill Ivory. State your name for the record. You have two minutes.
My name's Amanda Thompson, and my children are at ROKA and are third-generation Anchorage ASD students. And I'm an ASD educator and APC board member, and today I speak on my own behalf. So, back to the story. About those ten children in the very crowded cottage, filled with musical marimbas, elaborate science experiments, towers and books, and apprentice tools. Remember that their selfish stepmother wanted them out. Their dead mother's godfather had cruelly increased their lease to an extravagant amount. Our story left off with the two lost siblings standing by a serene lake at twilight, amazed to see beautiful, large, white cottages emerge from the fog. The seven powerful spirits hovered in the distance. Suddenly, a parched magpie swooped down, his feet others dancing in the air. "Did you hear? Did you hear?" he called. "Those cottages are for you." The children were dumbfounded, but we could never afford them. They cried, knowing it was too good to be true, tears brimming in their eyes. Little gold is needed, little ones. The seven spirits have determined, their advisors have determined you are most worthy. The magpie proudly squatted. Just then, a mighty gust of wind whisked far into the heavens. The seven spirits were in a semicircle, closer to the children. They started to twist chaotically. Some were fighting the wind, which was not to come every April first, but this was unusually early. With chains, we're pulling back a few of the spirits. Down died the magpie again, nearly missing a jagged branch. The spirits know what is right, children. Don't lose hope. You just need to be brave and remind them of the urgency. Eagle says your stepmother's trying to throw up your brothers now. That's where my story ends today because there are people who want to remind you of the urgency needed and doing the right thing for ROKA. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, Bill Ivory, if you're in the audience. And, um, um, Ms. Voorhees? Okay, and do we have your name right?
Yep, you did, Nan Voorhees.
Thank you. Um, you have two minutes.
Right. Well, thank you for taking the time to listen to me and everyone else tonight. I am here to ask you to seriously consider ROKA Shula's critical and time-sensitive requests to relocate to the Lakewood facility. I speak not only as a parent of two ROKA Shula students, Knox, who's in kindergarten and spoke for about seven seconds earlier, and Jack, who's in third grade, but also as an advocate for all of the four hundred and eighty-four students, teachers, and staff members who call ROKA Shula home. As many others have attested, our school has reached a fiscal breaking point, but we have also identified a solution to resolve that issue. The rent for our current facility is unsustainable. It did provide us with a home when we needed it most, but we've outgrown it, both in size and in affordability. Moving to the Lakewood facility presents a rare opportunity for us to establish a permanent and sustainable home. And we can turn around and reinvest those rent funds into vital school programs and staffing. The Lakewood facility would significantly benefit our students in other ways. Our current building has a uniquely small playground and our sped program and our small reading groups that meet in the hallways and our gym, lunchroom, and multipurpose space that are all housed in the same room, which creates logistical issues every day. All of these would benefit from operating in larger and more functional spaces. This request is urgent. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm so proud of what this school stands for, and I thank you for considering my request to give them the home they deserve.
Thank you very much. Again, I'll call for Bill Ivory, if you're here, followed by Kim Jockum and Edward Dorr. State your name for the record. You have two minutes.
I'm not Bill, but I'm Kim Jockum. If Bill is not around, okay, great. Thank you, sir. Um, for the record, my name is Kim Jockum, um, Dr. Kim Jockum. I'm a parent to one student currently at ROKA Shula. Liam, um, a little bit shy, but he made it work, his testimony earlier, very proud of him. And then my, um, daughter is gonna start kindergarten this year. Um, I'm very proud of the community ROKA Shula, um, presents. Like, the community is amazing. We love the school. Um, and I'm speaking to you today to request to support this, the support of ROKA Shula Immersion School to move to the ASD facility, ideally Lakewood, uh, in this, this school year. As we've heard mul- multiple folks say already, it's very time-sensitive for us right now to find a home, ideally a permanent home, where we can continue to, to grow. Um, also, a lot of folks pointed out the problems we have with budget cuts, right, and the mon- larger amount of rent we are paying, which is not sustainable any longer. Um, and, you know, really significant cuts to additional personnel would have to occur if, if we don't get to find, find a home, ideally with ASD. Um, so I see a lot of opportunities here. You know, we're serving, um, over four hundred and eighty ASD students across Anchorage and additional forty-two staff. Um, um, we're the only independent charter, uh, language immersion program here in Alaska. And, um, it's the largest in-person charter program as well in the state. I'm very proud to be part of that. Um, it's really perfect timing for us with our lease being up this summer. Um, I really, the time-sensitive nature, I really want to also elaborate that if we are moving to a neighborhood, um, school, that'd be great for, for that neighborhood to be able to also, um, participate in the lottery for the school. Um, I grew up in Germany. I'm extremely happy we have this community that we found here. I'm grateful for the dual-language immersion. It's such an amazing skill for kids. Um, I love about Anchorage, the many, many language promotion programs that are here. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Again, Edward Dorr. You're here, and then followed by Jacinda DeLong. You will state your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Edward Dorr. And thank you for your time. I am here because I want to see my child continue to have a positive experience at ASD as part of ROKA Shula. First here, I'm looking at, I believe that, uh, we will continue to be a great ASD school with a move to the vacant Lakewood ASD facility. I'm really excited about that, and I hope that is something that really comes to reality. Second, our student-staff ratio is positively affected when we eliminate our large current facility rental costs. That's just being a new parent at this school, I can't believe how big that of a deal that is. Third, our student body size fits very positively with the school, uh, at Lakewood Elementary. So with those three things, I really hope we get a chance to move to Lakewood Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If Karen Ottenweller can come down and Stalung, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Jacinda DeLong, and I am a mom of six, five of which of my children have attended or are attending O'Malley Elementary. Um, I've set, as such, it's been, this is my eleventh year as an O'Malley parent. Um, when my oldest started kindergarten, uh, she's now in the tenth grade, we had lotteryed her for several programs in the O'Malley School District, uh, of which she got into none. So that began our journey in the neighborhood program at O'Malley. Um, and then come first grade, she actually got accepted to ROKA Shula. And at that time, we declined her seat because we just felt so comfortable at O'Malley, and she was so much at home, and she was thriving. Fast forward a few years to two thousand and nineteen, and French immersion joined O'Malley. We were very happy as a family, um, to embrace that journey, and two of my children have been in the program. Um, you have heard from them this evening. And then this year again, I also have a kindergartner that just started at O'Malley. My kindergartner this year has some unique challenges. She has Down Syndrome, and she has a speech delay. And we had options to send her to a few different schools in O'Malley, uh, in the school district. But ultimately, we wanted to bring her home to our O'Malley. We wanted her to start kindergarten in a school community that we knew she would feel safe, feel compassion, and ultimately she could thrive. I could go on and on about O'Malley and its benefits to the community, but two minutes goes by fast. Adding five teachers to O'Malley has devastating effects to our school and the French immersion program. So I'm asking tonight that the school board give us back our teachers, give us back the ability to properly staff our French immersion program for this coming fall, including French teachers at O'Malley and French teachers at Goldenview. Staffing immersion takes time, and we need all the time we can get. As we move forward, I'm asking that the school board could make decisions that would bring sustainability to these enrichment programs like French immersion that add both culture and value to the Anchorage community. In closing, I invite you-
Thank you very much for your testimony. Again, Karen Ottenweller, if you're here, followed by Eve Ryan and Tim Ryan. You'll state your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Eve Ryan, and I'm the parent of three children whose schools, namely O'Malley Elementary and Goldenview Middle School, will be severely impacted by the budget cuts that are currently being considered by the school board. I'm testifying tonight to point out that there seems to be an unfair burden of cuts on O'Malley Elementary School and Goldenview Middle School. O'Malley Elementary is losing five teachers, the most of any elementary school in the district. Goldenview Middle School is losing nine teachers, which is equivalent to an entire grade level's worth of classroom educators. You need to understand that if the current budget goes through, our French language immersion program in the Anchorage School District will end. It's as simple as that. Did you know that our French program was recently recognized by the French government by being awarded the La Belle France Education? This special designation is awarded to exemplar French language immersion programs throughout the world. In other words, our French language immersion program at ASD is an exemplary program that has been internationally recognized. Teaching positions in language immersion programs are extremely hard to fill and often, and often require native speakers of their target language. In many cases, ASD needs to apply for and sponsor international work visas. This process takes months. We cannot wait until June to see if and what the legislature decides to fund. It will be too late for immersion programs. So wait until the summer, ASD will not be able to find and attract teachers from overseas to fill vacant positions in our immersion programs. To conclude, I would like to reiterate my point that both O'Malley Elementary and Goldenview Middle School need assurances now that funds will be allocated to adequate staffing in order to continue supporting our French language immersion program, a program that is a source-
Thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, Martha Lojewski, if you can come forward, and Mr. Ryan, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Tim Ryan, and I am a father of two students at O'Malley in the French Immersion School and another student at Goldenview. I myself went to O'Malley from kindergarten through sixth grade, then I went to handschu and service. And when my wife and I decided that we were going to move back to Anchorage, we specifically bought our house in the O'Malley School neighborhood so that our children could attend the French immersion school. This is what success in public education looks like, but today, this is all under threat. Cutting five teachers at O'Malley and nine at Goldenview will lead to the immediate elimination of the French immersion program, currently the most sought-after immersion program in the district. This is because the French teachers are by and large from France and come on two-year work visas. They are the ones whose positions will be eliminated if the program cuts go through. Moreover, as considerable time is required to acquire the visas they need to work in the United States, this program cannot be stood up again when funding comes in from the state over the summer. Simply, if it's not funded now, it gets dismantled. Our representative Julie Coulom has assured the parents of O'Malley that enough money from the state is on its way. So I encourage you to think strategically about the budget and only cut now what can quickly, quickly be brought back when these funds come in. Immersion doesn't work this way and needs funding from the district now.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Um, Martha Lojewski, Chelsea Pearson, Siobhan Mersing. You'll state your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Martha Lojewski, homegrown within ASD, mother of two daughters, APC Chair and Stream Advocate. I'm asking for your vote in favor of repurposing Nunaka Valley as the future home of Anchorage Stream Academy. I'm here today speaking on behalf of our current one hundred seventy-eight students, the one hundred-plus students on the waitlist, and the seventy-five students in the lottery as of this morning. There are dozens of reasons why this move would benefit hundreds of students as well as the Nunaka Valley community, but none so compelling as the words written by our students. Last week, we asked them two questions. What's great about Stream? And how do you feel about being a student here? This is what they wanted to share with you. I feel safe and protected. I feel included and heard. I feel amazing and ready to keep being a student. I feel more in touch with everything around me. I feel cared about. I feel known. I feel better just being at this school. Stream is unique in how we have a say in what we do, and the teachers actually take our feelings into consideration. We're a very proud school of what we've done together. The hands-on learning is fun and helps me actually see how things work. These three quarters have been the best three of all my school years. I love active projects, not just learning the words, but actions too. I am more focused on learning with a growth mindset. And this last one in particular hit me deep in my soul because it came from a girl who transferred to us from a different middle school due to severe bullying. I feel like I can breathe again at Stream. I feel like myself. Stream is ready to grow. We need to grow. Our future begins at the door, at the nineteen oh five Twining Drive, re-rented and reinvigorated as a thriving middle school in the heart of Nunaka Valley.
Sorry, your time has expired. Thank you very much for your testimony. Chelsea Pearson. Or you'll state your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Good evening, board members. My name is Siobhan, and I'm a hearing mother fighting for my son Seamus, who is a hard-of-hearing fifth grader at AKSD. He wanted to come testify, but unfortunately, he's homesick. I'm also here on behalf of the deaf community in our schools. Seamus was born with physical differences. One was being born with hearing loss. ASL is his first language, and this program has been essential to his ability to grow and thrive. It's not just about the teaching staff, though they have been incredible. It's about the entire support system, the people who truly understand and connect with him. People like Byron, our intervention coach, and Courtney, our school counselor, who are not only trained professionals, but deeply understand the nuances of his community and culture. Because this just isn't a program, it's a whole community. And when you start removing key people from that community, you don't just weaken a program, you break the support system that our deaf students rely on. Imagine being in a moment of crisis and needing a counselor, but no one speaks your language. Imagine your child struggling with their emotions, overwhelmed, but there is no one who can immediately communicate with them. Instead, everything they say and hear has to go through an interpreter, or worse, no interpreter is available at all. That's what all these cuts will do. Seamus has faced more challenges than most kids his age, seventeen surgeries, countless obstacles. These professionals know this and have worked with him many times when he was struggling with being overwhelmed. When Seamus's good friend moved away, which left him feeling emotional, one of the only people he responded to was Byron. Having a male deaf mentor is important for him. The same goes for Courtney, our counselor, who has dedicated so much time to supporting these students, working with them. She has helped my son to learn that his feelings don't have to be so overwhelming and that he can express them in a healthy way instead of shutting down. That kind of trust and connection doesn't come easily, and it certainly can't be replaced in bringing someone new and hoping they build relationships over time. Removing them isn't just inconvenient, it's harmful. When we lose good deaf professionals, we lose deaf students. Parents like me will do whatever it takes to get our children the support they need, even if it means leaving Alaska for a better program elsewhere. And we are already seeing this happen. I know the budget is tight, but I also know there are other places these cuts could be made, where shifts could happen without dismantling an essential program for deaf students. Anchorage has a small but mighty deaf community. We need to do whatever it takes to keep it together. Please do not take away these people and the resources that are making a real difference in these kids' lives, in my son's life. I also wanted to respond to saying something that I heard before tonight. My son is hard-of-hearing, and because of AKSD is-
I'm sorry, but your time has expired. Thank you very much for your testimony. Checking back Chelsea Pearson, if you're here. Adam McKelkey, followed by Hinda Kasher-Hoffer. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Adam McKelkey. My name's Adam McKelkey, and I'm the founding principal of Anchorage Stream Academy. I'm here tonight to advocate for our program. ASD is repurposing Nunaka Valley Elementary, and this facility is the perfect fit for our program. This isn't just about a facility. It's about securing the future for an innovative and thriving program dedicated to the East Anchorage community. Our charter stipulates that we will remain physically located in East Anchorage, and we are the only charter school in the state of Alaska that gives a neighborhood preference to East Anchorage families. At a time when East Anchorage is feeling the brunt of budget cuts and closures, Stream is providing a high-quality educational option. We won't leave East Anchorage, and not every East Anchorage facility would work for us. Nunaka's location and access to green space is the perfect fit for our program. Over the past nine years, Stream has continuously grown and thrived throughout all of our challenges, meeting our mission and vision of providing project-based learning, STEM, and outdoor experiential education for our kids. We serve a diverse student population representative of East Anchorage and maintain a 93% attendance rate, strong academic scores and focus, and a waitlist of over 100 students. The demand for Stream is strong and our growth potential is clear, but we can't achieve that with our current facility. At a time when we're concerned about funding, Stream is paying $330,000 a year, or $1 million every three years to a private university. That money could be going back into ASD. Moving to Nunaka would provide long-term stability and allow us to grow and give our students a safe, secure facility to access outdoor educational opportunities and meet our mission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Erin Strachey, if you can come forward, and Ms. Kasher-Hoffer, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Hinda Kasher, and I want to thank everyone for the opportunity for me to be here to provide public testimony. I would like to ask you to consider a few important questions. Would you eliminate all of the hearing school counselors? If not, why are you cutting the ASL counselor? Would you cut all of the intervention coaches in ASD? Then why are you eliminating the one ASL intervention coach? Would you cut all foreign language classes like Spanish, French, or German? Or just the ASL classes? For many of the students at AKSD, American Sign Language is their only link to deaf culture. It is not just about learning a language, but connecting them to the entire community. I am a parent of a pre-K child, and I am worried about his access to a counselor who understands ASL and his cultural background. For my child, this is concerning. My husband himself is an AKSD alum, and he works in construction. He recently met a coworker who knew American Sign Language, and the positive impact of being able to communicate in their shared language is irreplaceable. And that is just one example of how ASL education opens doors to meaningful connections and opportunities. As a substitute ASL teacher, I have had the privilege of sharing this language and culture with East High School students. ASL is the fourth most popular language in America and the closest to English of any foreign language taught at East High School. While ASL interpreters are vital, they cannot replace deaf role models. Deaf students need deaf role models to fully embrace their identity, something only these role models are able to provide to the students. Alaska is unique in not having a school for the deaf, and many of our students ASL in their connection. Many students in the lower 48 have a residential school that they are able to attend. And many of our students here do not have that connection to ASL, and they have language deprivation, and they're often lost. Our school numbers will shrink. Our deaf community will also shrink. Removing these vital resources will impact our education and hinder the growth of our deaf community. Please don't take away something that is vital to our future for our students and our deaf culture. Your decision today can make a lasting positive impact. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Karen Strachey, or Strach- yeah, thank you, followed by Charles McKee. Go ahead, yes.
Hello, my name is Karen Strachey, and I am the parent of two students who receive special education services in the Anchorage School District. Two weeks ago, I provided testimony to express my concerns about the budget cuts for my daughter's school, the Alaska State School for Deaf and Hard of Hearing. And tonight, I'm here to advocate for my son and the Ignite Program. My son attends arguably the top academic-achieving elementary school in the state Eagle Academy Charter School. Eagle Academy is known for its rigorous academic standards and exceptional proficiency scores that significantly surpass the Anchorage School District and statewide averages. Eagle Academy students are often instructed at a year level above their current grade. For example, my son's in the third grade, and the curriculum is in the fourth grade material. With this said, my son is bored in school. His IQ scores place him in the superior intelligence or gifted range. He needs educational opportunities that stimulate and challenge him to be engaged. The Ignite Program offers this to him. It is the only class that he comes home excited about and engaged with the materials. Ignite not only offers students with exceptional abilities a specialized curriculum to meet their academic needs, but it also provides the social-emotional supports for these students. This unique population of gifted students often experience a disconnect between their intellectual abilities and their social-emotional development. One of the most important aspects of the Ignite Program is that it surrounds gifted children with like-minded peers who share similar abilities and interests. This environment allows them to feel understood and accepted. The Ignite Program provides an educational experience that addresses the academic and social-emotional needs of these gifted children. It keeps these students engaged, challenged, and excited about learning, all while giving them the necessary tools to navigate the complexities of being gifted. This type of environment allows these students to thrive in ways that the traditional classroom cannot provide to them. I do urge the school board to reconsider keeping the Ignite Program. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Allison Gower, if you will come down. Mr. McKee, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
My name's Charles McKee. I'm a beneficiary of the McKee Trust, and I want to reiterate the House Bill 69, Representative Hemshue put forward. And I'm going to refer to a love letter to the people that are incarcerated that you already have a copy of. The checkmate situation that you are currently enjoying is caused by not recognizing the juvenile jurisdiction that you have power over. And also, this stems from another letter of love that I conveyed to a dove that works at Banquet House, and a copy of that is at Anchorage Daily News, and also my experience with understanding love, understanding love and the spiritual aspects to all things physical, mandated by Lord Jesus Christ in my life. To that end, I went to the hospital in an emergency situation, and I was screaming in the ER room. This is a manufactured emergency caused by the Dunleavy administration. I testified against the FIS tax bill, and this is a result, that as well as testify against the court system and their corruption. With that, I didn't know the 7th of July 2019, the 1st of July, he had vetoed Medicaid/Medicare services for all the hospitals in the state. So they listened to my comment, and they sued them, the Doctors and Nurses Association, who dances with the angels and sometimes God in their practice, and-
Sorry, your time has expired. Can you spell your last name for the record? Okay, thank you. Allison Gower, followed by Amanda Riddle. And that would be followed by Lanay Winfrey. If you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lanay Winfrey, ASD Nursing. Our students should have equal access to healthcare, not based on school enrollment of 301 versus 299. Will a medically fragile student have to attend a different school because a full-time nurse is required for their safety? Keeping students safe at school is our responsibility. Our students need nursing knowledge and skills to manage chronic health conditions, broken bones, seizures, head injuries, when they have chest pain, breathing problems, low blood sugar. Minutes count. We are involved in behavior interventions. We are critical members of suicide risk assessment teams. We are team leaders for emergency response. By Alaska law, I cannot delegate nursing assessment. I cannot delegate evaluation of treatments. I cannot delegate as-needed emergency medications without parent/physician signatures in advance. I cannot delegate insulin administration ever. The proposed budget implies there is a staff member who has an extra two and a half days' worth of time in their week, an 0.5 position to take over nursing duties. I propose there is no staff meeting that has that time. Reducing nursing time will result in decreased attendance and jeopardize the health and safety of our students. It's a risk that could have grave consequences. Who would be the first responder for difficulty breathing and determine if it is anxiety, an anaphylactic event, an asthma attack, a heart attack, an exposure to fentanyl? Then respond appropriately, including legal documentation. All school nurses need to continue being that person 100% of the time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. Again, I want to touch back for Allison Gower and Amanda Riddle, if you're here. Please come forward. If you will state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
My name is Amanda Riddle. I'm the school nurse at Ursula Minor Elementary on Jay Bear. I'm here today to help ASD recognize the importance of having a full-time school nurse in every school, regardless of the school size. I want you to imagine this: A student suddenly has an asthma attack during PE, while another student breaks their arm at the same time. Shortly after, a different student accidentally eats something from a friend's lunch that triggers a severe allergic reaction, leaving them unable to breathe. Later that same day, a student has a seizure in class, and on top of all of that, a child with diabetes experiences dangerously low blood sugar and becomes unresponsive. I currently have students at my school with each of these diagnoses plus more, ranging from preschool to fifth grade. Now who takes care of these children if the school only has a part-time nurse? Too often in schools without a full-time nurse, the responsibility falls on an overworked teacher with an already overflowing class, busy office staff juggling countless responsibilities, or in the worst-case scenario, students are left waiting for first responders to arrive. School nurses are essential for student safety. Medical emergencies can happen at any time, whether it's an allergic reaction, a diabetic crisis, a seizure, or even a mental health episode. A trained nurse can assess and respond quickly and prevent minor issues from becoming life-threatening emergencies. School nurses help keep students in the classroom. Without a medical professional available, students who feel unwell are often sent home unnecessarily. A nurse can determine whether a student truly needs to go home or if they can stay and continue learning. Finally, nurse, school nurses support not only physical health, but also mental well-being. Many students struggle with anxiety, stress, or even depression, especially in our military community, where parents can be deployed for long periods of time. Having a trusted nurse available daily provides students with support and guidance that can make all the difference. Schools would never consider operating without teachers, so why should they run without healthcare professionals? Every child deserves a safe and healthy learning environment, so let's make full-time school nurses a priority, not a luxury. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Erin Schumacher, followed by Mario Ayertis, or Ayertis, sorry if I'm mispronouncing that. If you will state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Erin Schumacher. I'm a parent of two ASD graduates and a district employee in the gifted program. Thank you all for your service and commitment to our community. Once again, the Ignite Program that serves the needs of all students identified as gifted has been slated to be eliminated. Gifted students have unique learning needs. This is why they are included in the formula for funding as a special population. To propose eliminating the entire Ignite Program year after year displays an oversight to recognize the unique needs of this special population. Thankfully, the board has thoughtfully considered the value of the Ignite Program and found ways to maintain services for gifted students. Ignite teachers serve not only identified gifted students, but also provide weekly enrichment lessons to teacher-nominated students. Ignite teachers are part of the M-class testing team. For six weeks out of the school year, they travel from school to school assessing primary learners during M-class testing. With the elimination of all Ignite teachers, other staff will need to be assigned or outside individuals will need to be recruited, trained, and paid for the testing. Looking at the budget proposal and the impact it'll have on all students, it appears the hard choice which is best for the majority of students would be to follow through with additional school closures. The difficult reality is that we can't afford not to close more under-capacity schools. In doing so, we'll be better equipped to meet the needs of our entire student population. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If Teresa Holtz can come forward, and if you can state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Mario Ayertis, and my son Daniel is a first grader at Rilka Shula. A few weeks ago, my son came and testified for all of you, asking for your help, and I'm here to do the same. As you are aware, Rilka Shula is vying for the Lakewood Elementary Facility, and moving the school there would be an immense boon to its students and school community. Rilka's current facility is not a school-owned building, their school district-owned building. Every year, Rilka spends nearly $1 million of its precious budget to pay for rent, utilities, and maintenance to use that facility. Due to this burden, the school has had to make countless sacrifices in the past just to keep the doors open, and this coming year is no exception. With the given budgetary constraints, Rilka Shula will not be able to- With the given budgetary constraints, Rilka Shula will not be able to employ a custodian, will not be able to employ a counselor. And will have to terminate, um, crucial paraprofessional and auxiliary teaching positions, but you alone can prevent this. The benefits of moving, uh, to the Lakewood facility go beyond just the budgetary concerns. Not only will Rilka be able to apply that one million dollars toward keeping those paraprofessional and auxiliary teaching positions, hiring a counselor, employing a custodian, and updating its educational infrastructural, uh, infrastructure. It's roughly four hundred and eighty students will get access for the first time to a dedicated lunchroom, a dedicated gym, an actual library, and adequate space for music, art, and students without EP and five oh four plans. I cannot emphasize in great enough magnitude how important and time-sensitive this choice is. Uh, we are fully aware, uh, that there is another school vying for the same building. Uh, please consider that before, uh, that the other school also has three more years at that, at their current facility, which is already an ASD facility, uh, while the lease on Rhett's current facility is going to be up in just a few months. Please, I implore you, help our students, help our teachers, and help our school by choosing Rilka Shula for the Lakewood facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. I want to touch back Teresa Holtz again, Allison Gower, Chelsea Pearson, Karen Ottenweller, Bill Ivory. Not seeing anyone approaching, uh, Megan Peltier and Adrian Michael. You'll state your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Bonsoir, je m'appelle Megan Peltier, or I'll save you my French. I'm Megan Peltier. Uh, I am a graduate of the Anchorage School District and a mother of three O'Malley Malamutes. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to ask you to put funding for immersion teachers back into the budget that you approve next week. I know a lot of great teachers and programs are proposed for cuts in the current budget, but there's hope that the legislature will increase fundings that most of those can be brought back later. However, the French immersion program and other immersion programs need funding now. We need to get started on hiring two elementary French immersion teachers and one middle school French immersion teacher as soon as possible. These are not positions that can be filled quickly. We have a great track record of bringing very talented teachers from France, but these teachers require visas which take time to obtain and therefore the positions need funding in the initial budget. During the work session, Mr. Lang said it would be good to hire someone in April if they need a visa. But to do that, we have to start looking for candidates now. I know a lot of focus has been on O'Malley, but I want to remind you that next year, our leading class of the French immersion program, including my oldest daughter, is going on to Goldenview Middle School. These kids have been the first to try out the translated curriculum each year. They are in kindergarten, first and second grade, learning in a foreign language through Zoom and with face masks on. Please let them have a successful transition to middle school by funding their French immersion teacher now. If we don't have sufficient time to find, hire, and obtain visas for these teachers, the immersion program won't be able to survive. As a board and administration, you've worked hard to implement a transparent system for closing schools and supporting students in the transition to their new schools. This budget would bypass that system and shutter the.
Thank you for your testimony. Again, Adrian Michael, uh, followed by Misty Nelson on line, uh, followed by James Bott. Not seeing anyone come forward on Mr. Bott. Um, and before you, we have Misty Nelson via telephone. Okay, she's not connected still. Uh, Mr. Bott, you'll state your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm James Bott. Uh, I'm the father of two West High students and hockey players. I'm here to speak in support of all school sports in general and hockey specifically. School sports are an important part of developing mentally and physically healthy young people. They also get in less trouble when their time is occupied by sports. Our government leaders say they want to make Anchorage a place where our kids will want to stay to have, uh, positive futures of their own. But cutting sports will probably only speed up the exodus of our kids, especially the smart and motivated ones. There's plenty of blame to go around. I've written the Muni for unfairly charging ASD more for ice rink rental than other user groups. Uh, the state certainly owns most of the blame for the stagnant BSA, and I've written them as well. Uh, as for ASD's proposed budget, I find it a little surprising that ASD is so quick to eliminate sports. Uh, while increasing the budget of some discretionary items, um, I won't go through those, but uh, I'd be curious, did you, did you look for ways to make ice hockey less expensive? Ice hockey and some of the other sports that, uh, are on the more expensive end. Cause there's certainly ways and did you ask parents if they would be willing to pay a higher activity fee to play hockey? Um, or some of the other sports that are on the chopping block, because I know some parents would be willing. And there would also be parents, uh, including myself, who would probably be willing to sponsor or help fund activity fees for students who are less financially able to, to pay for those. Um, I know you have to make tough choices when developing the budget and you're in a really tough spot, but um, I think there's probably got to be some solutions for these sports and, uh, just consider the long-term impacts that cutting sports will have on the future of our kids.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Rachel Posey followed by Holland Roberts. Not seeing anyone approaching Ellie Smith and Wayne Pashon. And not seeing Wayne approaching, um, Zoe Styron. Or Zoe Styron, please come forward, go ahead and have a seat and feel state your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Hello, uh, my name is Holland Roberts and I'm a parent at Eagle River Elementary. I'm concerned about the suggestion of smaller schools moving to part-time nurses. I have a child with severe food allergies and I do not think it's feasible to put his life in the hands of untrained professionals. They say the body tells a story. I say that nurses are better educated, trained, and composed at reading kids' bodies than anyone else. What if the child having an allergic reaction that doesn't understand what is happening to their bodies? You're placing life and death situations into the hands of staff who aren't trained to handle such emergencies. Who are not well-versed in maintaining composure and who, and who should not have to shoulder this responsibility. With part-time nurses, you are creating a solution that will only elicit more problems. You are spreading valuable resources then under which no one can stand, student or teacher. There is also another saying, you don't rise to the occasion, you rise to your training. We have plans for earthquakes. We have plans for active shooters. What's the plan for the kids who can't breathe? Full-time nurses keep our kids healthy and safe. Nurses are essential, whether you have two hundred and ninety-nine students or three hundred and one. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Again, touching back Adrian Michael. Did Misty Nelson come online? Uh, Rachel Posey, Ellie Smith, Wayne Pashon, and Ms. Styron. If you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. Um, my name is Zoe Styron. I'm the mother of two children at O'Malley Elementary School. Um, it's heartbreaking to sit here and listen to the testimony from people from all of the different schools, the different programs, the nursing, the immersion schools, the deaf school. Um, I acknowledge that you're in a terrible position in terms of having to make a budget decision and to decide where to make cuts. Um, I'm here to talk about the incredible value of our language immersion programs. And to ask that in deciding where you make your cuts in this provisional budget, you recognize that the immersion programs do not benefit from the time flexibility that perhaps some of these other programs and costs included in the budget do. As other people have mentioned, we have to recruit staff now in order to get the teachers we need. Um, language immersion is of great benefit to our children, to our city, and to our state. Eleven years ago, when my husband and I were deciding where to put down roots and raise a family, we were visiting Alaska and we had an NPR story about Anchorage's language immersion provision. And while it isn't the only reason that we moved here, it was a large part of that decision. Language immersion programs bring people here and they encourage families to stay. Um, I ask that you look at other ways to, um, balance the budget and to identify spending that isn't time-sensitive in the way that our language immersion programs are. And please rest assured that we are contacting our legislators with just as much enthusiasm and vehemence as you're hearing from us now.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Christine Cordier, uh, Robert Misulich. If you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Christine Couturier. I'm the president of French Language Advocates Anchorage, a nonprofit founded in two thousand and eighteen by a community passionate about French language and culture. Today, our organization has over three hundred and fifty members. In two thousand and eighteen, we successfully petitioned the ASD school board. Maybe you remember to start the K-12 French immersion program in O'Malley Elementary. And since we have been raising funds to support and grow the program. Last year, it received the France Education Label from the French government uh, that recognizes and promotes high-quality bilingual, uh, French teaching. And over the past seven years, with the constant support of the O'Malley families, our community and local businesses, we have raised over a hundred thousand dollars. Launching and supporting the program has required a significant investment in time and resources, which is now at risk. We have a very strong and growing program, very popular with Anchorage families. Each year, the waiting list is full. And for fifty percent of the kids, O'Malley is not their neighborhood school. The program is not only attractive for local families, but also families from across the Anchorage Bowl. And it draws interest from those considering relocating to Alaska. The proposed reduction of seven out of seven, uh, five out of seventeen teachers in O'Malley means the end of the French immersion program. O'Malley needs to start recruiting new French teachers for next year, right now, so their visa can be processed. And as often, if the funds come later, it will be too late. And it's not like the program can be reinstated next year. Seven years of sustained effort will be wasted. I'm also a parent. My two kids are in the program and I wanted them and the other kids to pay the price because Alaska doesn't want to invest in their future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Simon Rose, if you'll come forward and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Rob Misulich, I have two kids in the French program. I'm also the VP of FLA. Uh, the proposed budget would kill French immersion in Anchorage. This is because it slashes a quarter of the teaching positions at O'Malley. These cuts would fall entirely on the award-winning French program, where there are far more families on the waitlist than there are seats in the program. The budget disproportionately cuts, uh, two, uh, two immersion schools in Anchorage, in particular, O'Malley and Sand Lake, where the FTE cuts are far greater than in other schools, some of whom actually stand to gain FTEs under this budget. The heaviest cuts are to classroom education, even though this is the core mission of ASD. Funding has been preserved or even increased in other ancillary areas. One example being a eight hundred sixty thousand dollar vendor contract budget for the office of the superintendent. Their personnel expenditure increases of two point six, four point one, four point eight, and six point six percent in the budgets of the COO, CFO, OMB, and risk management. Transportation funding is increased by over one point four million for a total transit budget exceeding thirty-two million. The O'Malley FTE cuts would net a cost savings of merely eight, uh, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, less than half of the superintendent's vendor budget, or one percent of the transit budget, killing a program that parents have opted into in lieu of free transit, driving their kids every day from as far as Peters Creek. There's a political tug-of-war going on between ASD and the legislature, and it's played out year after year, causing great stress for Anchorage families. Every year, the legislature has allocated funding after the three-one budget deadline, and this will happen again this year. Items are added back to the budget later after funding materializes. As others have stated, the FTEs at O'Malley cannot be added back in later. French teachers come to the US for two-year terms. Brandon Locke needs to commence the hiring process for those teachers now in order to obtain. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. If Jennifer Allison will come forward, she's connected telephonically. If, um, Kelly Doherty will come forward and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
All right. My name is Simon Rose. I am a teacher at Highland. Um, as you've heard from our students already, um, they have expressed, uh, quite a bit of, uh, fears about the, um, space that we have, um, especially concerning safety, um, when trying to do PE out in the parking lot area. Um, and also we've been kind of crammed into a space that's been a little too small for us for a while now. Um, but despite that, our staff, uh, has been really, really innovative. It's been, been actually pretty amazing, kind of seeing the type of work that they do and the type of, um, thought that they put into the lessons and curriculum design. I mean, it's, it's amazing and um, I'm really excited to see what would happen if the move to Nunaka Valley actually did happen. Uh, in terms of the opportunities that it set us up for, that could be thinking about just a science classroom where you don't have to take down a lab and set up a lab every single class period or between class periods. The facilities would also give us a kitchen, so we can completely revamp our school lunch program, so it would be much, much more nutritious for our students, um, especially considering the population of students I usually serve. I think it would really benefit them quite a bit, having access to, to holistic meals in that way. Um, we worked through intensives as well, which are kind of these like small mini terms in a way where we can, uh, dig down into projects that we're passionate about, students are passionate about. Um, anything from my carpentry, drama, cooking, biking, drumming, dance, yoga, I mean, goes on. Uh, we've been able to pull this off somehow, like in the space that we have, but it'd be so amazing to just imagine where this can go. And on top of all that, it's pretty sweet that, uh, that ASD might be saving quite a bit of money. Other programs could move into the space. It's right next door here.
And I'm sorry, your time has expired, but thank you for your testimony. Jennifer Allison followed by Kelly Doherty. Not seeing anyone moving, uh, Dan, Dan L Spala, followed by Rebecca Emerson. State your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Dan L Spala, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am here as a Highland parent and as a Highland teacher, and out of respect for your time, uh, we've had several students already speak and there are many more of us that could speak, but, uh, rather than all of us speaking, I'm just representing many other parents, staff, and stakeholders for our school. I'm here to strongly support the potential move of Highland Academy into the Nunaka Valley Elementary School. This move presents us with a chance to provide a larger and safer space for our students, which is essential for their growth and wellbeing. Nunaka Valley will offer more space for classrooms, safer outdoor areas away from the busy intersections right out here. Um, and improve security, ensuring a better environment for both learning and student engagement. This relocation will help us to foster a stronger community connection. Nunaka Valley's location in a neighborhood will help us to actually build some community partnerships. It will allow us to enrich our educational opportunities, some of our after-school programs, and other community engagement initiatives. This move will also help us in cost savings, which we will then be able to reinvest into resources that will directly benefit our students. Uh, whether that's new technology, better programs, or group classroom environments. And finally, Nunaka Valley helps us with additional spaces and classrooms so that we can expand and accommodate a growing student body. This ensures that we can. This ensures that we can continue to meet the needs of not just our current students, but also our future students, helping us to plan for years to come. This relocation would be an investment in the future of my student, who is at this school, but also all of the other students that I represent. This future is a great place for us to thrive and grow. And I urge you to approve this move of Highland into the Nunaka Valley Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Elizabeth Serrano could come forward, and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
My name is Rebecca Emerson, and I'm a parent of two children at Chugatch Optional School. I'm deeply concerned about the proposed budget cuts, which would eliminate two of our eleven classroom teachers and reduce our librarian and nurse to halftime positions. I chose Chugatch Optional because of its outstanding reputation. Test scores consistently demonstrate high achievement and high growth. And when I visited, I was impressed by the motivated, on-task students working together on projects. Over the past four years, I have witnessed the seemingly magical way in which the program at Chugatch Optional produces confident, successful learners. But every aspect of our program, from multi-age classrooms to library integration, is intentional and essential to our success. Eliminating two teachers would significantly disrupt the flow of our multi-age classrooms, which operate on a two-year curriculum cycle. The library is the heart of our school. A quote from our school's first year in nineteen seventy-three remains true today. Our librarian supports all aspects of our program throughout the day. Reducing our librarian's time would be a severe blow to the core of our educational program. Additionally, reducing our nurses' hours would pose a serious safety issue for students with severe allergies and those needing medications multiple times a day, both of which we have at our school. Chugatch Optional School has thrived for fifty years with an integrated, intentional program. I am deeply concerned that the proposed cuts could fundamentally alter our program, making it unrecognizable. Please do not jeopardize the success of a program that has worked so well for so long. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Elizabeth Serrano, Patty Trot, followed by Elaine Squire. That would be followed by Faith Christ. If you will state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
I'm, sorry, I have a really bad voice. So my daughter, Iona, she testified earlier today. She has a moderately severe sensor neural hearing loss. She begins to hear at about sixty to seventy decibels. That's about as loud as a vacuum cleaner. So ASD has a wonderful, successful preschool program for hard-of-hearing children. It's got the Learning and Spoken Language Communication option. The goal of the LSL is for children to attend local schools in a mainstream hearing environment. This approach teaches young children with hearing loss to listen and talk with the support of hearing technology, such as hearing aids, assisted listening devices, and cochlear implants. So my daughter graduated from West in December, and she graduated from this program when she was four years old. And she went to Turnigan Elementary School, where she enrolled in the Russian immersion program. So she left the LSL program with an IEP. So after her first grade, she tested out of an IEP into a five oh four plan. This is a success. This program is a success. And right now, the Anchorage School District wants to move it from Willowah to Russian Jack. You need to leave it where it's at. It's successful. It works. Please leave it alone. Let it continue being successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Elaine Squire, again, Faith Christ. Rebecca Colvin. Followed by Rochelle Killian. Followed by Matthew Samuel. If you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
My name is Rebecca Colvin, and I am the APC Chair for Rilke Schula German Immersion School. I come to you to request your support to move Rilke Schula into Lakewood Elementary as recommended in the district's repurposing plan. The district's rightsizing initiative clearly stated that it was not related to the budget and was instead being conducted to, quote, "provide better educational opportunities, more efficiently, in fully-staffed buildings." Moving Rilka into Lakewood will clearly meet this goal. We will fill the building to one-hundred percent capacity from their current thirty-nine percent. We will fill every single classroom. We are move-in ready with no building modification needed. You've heard these next items many times from Rilka already, but they're worth repeating. We have an urgent need for an ASD facility. Our ten-year commercial lease expires in six months. We can no longer afford the rental rate due to flat state funding. We are draining our savings for rental costs. We have reduced staff and cut services. Our budget for next year does not even include textbooks. We have requested our nonprofit organization to fund them instead. We've done everything we can to bear this facility burden while providing a quality immersion program for our ASD students. Please, we need your support and vote to move Rilke Schula into Lakewood Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Again, Rochelle Killian. Matthew Samuel. Hannah Deatcraft. I'm not sure I'm saying that right at all. Yes, have a seat. David Snyder. Our seats are full right at the moment. If you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Matthew Samuel. I'm testifying against moving the Listening and Spoken Language Program from Willowah to Russian Jack. My daughter Amelia testified earlier. It's hard to believe that she was born with a significant hearing loss. And as a graduate of the Willowah Listening and Spoken Language Program, she's assimilated into mainstream classes, firstly at Denali Montessori, latterly at the Stream Academy, and is now making her choice of ASD High School for August of this year. While born with hearing loss, this does not define Amelia. We made a choice for auditory-verbal learning supplemented by hearing aids. She was successfully supported by pre-K instruction at Willowah, leading to an independent individual who advocates for herself and can follow the mainstream curriculum. This thriving program has seen over forty-five graduates who through the school district attending schools of their choice to focus on their academic strengths or just simply attend their neighborhood school. While two individuals may be born with the same hearing loss, the chosen methods of instruction could not be more different between sign language and listening and spoken language. Each deserves to be fully supported and funded. Possibly not in the same location, LSL needs to have a hundred percent focus on these students, especially during the early years of brain development. To give these students the exposure to the Listening and Spoken Language, I ask that they remain within the successful setting of the Willowah School. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And if David Snyder can come forward, and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Hannah Deatcraft, and I am a graduate of Anchorage School District, a former teacher, and a current substitute at Rilke Schula. I have been, I'm also a parent of one Rilka student, and I have two more coming their way. I have been connected to Rilke Schula since day one of Rilka. I remember the day when I saw in the newspaper that Rilka was opening, and I jumped at the opportunity to volunteer, and I spent my senior year of high school volunteering at Rilke Schula, and I am still connected with my host teacher from that year. My experiences through ASD with O'Malley Handschuin Service High School revealed my passion for learning German, which motivated me to pursue a career in education. I am thrilled to see my son thriving at Rilke Schula thanks to his dedicated teachers. However, our current building lacks sufficient space for exploration, collaboration, and it leads to conflicts and limits our students' growth. I have witnessed this firsthand by subbing in almost every single classroom in the building and having had my own classroom in the building before. Immersion schools all around our city are vital for fostering cultural compassion and achieving higher academic performance. The success of Rilke Schula is evident in our excellent testing scores. However, flat funding and rising costs make our situation unsustainable, as you so thoroughly described earlier. I urge you as school members to support our program by letting us move into the Lakewood Building. This move would allow us to take twenty percent of our budget and support our students instead of paying money to an outside organization for rent. This is one way that we can find room in the budget without making any cuts, which I know is important to you. Thank you for considering the future of Rilke Schula.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We have been going for about eighty minutes. We do have about an hour or slightly more than an hour's worth of testimony left. Someone call for a ten-minute recess, and we will reconvene shortly. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. And if Laura Grande can come forward and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Griffo. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I am here to advocate for the Rilke Shula moving into Lakewood Elementary School Building. First of all, a lot of students have been talking about the playground, and that's what my students asked me to talk about tonight, too. However, nobody has addressed the flooding. Rilke Shula is adjacent to a swamp, and that swamp water is often flooding our playground. Above freezing, that means we've got wet kids, muddy kids, coming into the school, and coming home, kind of gross. Below freezing, that means we have an ice scape. This often is an unsafe condition that closes part or all of the playground. As a lot of the students have mentioned, we have a very small playground, and what they're all looking forward to is a bigger place to play. They want to have some fun. They want to run. They don't want to be stopped by ice or asked to bring cleats to school so they can go outside. My comment is, how can we help each other? Twenty percent of the Rilke Shula budget goes to an outside corporation for our rent. And if we were to be moved into an ASD building, twenty percent of our budget would, or one hundred percent of our budget could then stay within ASD. We would have more ASD employees and we would take over the facility costs of the Lakewood Building. So please, my children ask, may we please move into the Lakewood Building? I'm, I ask for that. I'm a substitute teacher, and I did an internship at the Lakewood Building. It's a lovely facility, and I would love to see my children go to school there through eighth grade. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. If you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kate Hammer. My son Bennett is a second grader in the French immersion program at O'Malley Elementary School. He's also the third generation of children in my family to attend O'Malley. I was there from kindergarten until sixth grade, and his grandmother was also there. My husband and I were both born and raised in Anchorage and attended ASD schools from K through twelfth grade. My husband will retire this year as Lieutenant Colonel with twenty years service of air, uh, service as an Air Force pilot. When we were stationed here four years ago, we settled in, thinking this could be our forever home once he retires and we get to choose for the first time in two decades where we live. Both of our careers are highly mobile. The French immersion program is consistently at the top of the list of reasons we plan to stay here. The community we've gained at O'Malley also high on that list. My son is blooming in the French immersion program. He's developing skills beyond just the language that will serve him for life, and our daughter is ready to follow in his steps this fall. Anchorage is better served by graduates who are stretched by our education system, who think in different and creative ways, and who hopefully will feel the pull of their hometown when they too get to decide where to live. When my childhood friends who have left ask me about life back in Anchorage, I admit there are challenges. But so far, the quality of my son's education in the French immersion program is not one of them. My husband and I received excellent educations from ASD schools, but this academic excellence has eroded. ASD language immersion programs are a bright spot in a struggling system, and it does not make sense to end them. When we erode the strands that hold the fabric of our community together by dismantling highly successful education opportunities for our children, what does life in Anchorage look like anymore? The current budget calls for the removal of five teachers from O'Malley. This will end the French immersion program. Please do not support this or in any other way support a budget that destroys our program, which is so strong after seven years of growth. A program that is creating an amazing group of kids who will be the next generation to contribute to the growth and prosperity of Anchorage. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And if Laura Grande can come forward and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sophie Latte, and I work at O'Malley Elementary School in the French immersion program. I've taught all of the first grade classes that have come through our program. I am very invested in this program. It's been super successful, and it's been recognized by the French government with academic awards, a great honor. Also, this year, we had a French senator come through who had nothing but praise for the good work that our French teachers are doing in this program and the quality bilingual education that our students are receiving. The French Language Advocates are our founding organization, and Christine talked to you a little bit earlier. They have been working really hard with a program called Jules Verne to bring high-quality teachers here from France, as you guys have heard already. So, and as you also know, now is the time to be getting those teachers here. As it stands, we are now slated to lose five teachers, and one of those is me. And I am the oldest teacher in our program right now. And the other is our kindergarten teacher, who is also one of the mainstays. We're both locals. Yet, with the years of experience that we have in the district and our school, you know, we're some of the last people that will remain, or that will, we will be cut first. Anyway, there's other ways, I think, that we could think creatively about how to work this out. Maybe our program could remain strong. Our immersion classes are quite full. We could bus kids over from other programs that might be closing and bring in other children to our school and, and keep.
Sorry, but your time has expired. Thank you for your testimony. If Benjamin Westveer can come forward, and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Laura Grande. I'm a proud parent of a current O'Malley Elementary School second grader in the French immersion program. I'm here to urge the school board to stop the proposed budget cuts to our school. With the proposed budget cuts for the upcoming academic year, O'Malley Elementary School is expecting to have one of the largest cuts to elementary schools, losing five out of seventeen teachers. This enormous cut to my son's school will essentially decimate the French immersion program. This program is the reason my son goes to O'Malley. Does language immersion is a valuable investment in my son's future? Research consistently shows that bilingual students excel academically, outperforming their peers in reading, math, science, and problem solving. This program doesn't just teach French. It enhances our students' cognitive development, improving their focus and critical thinking skills that benefit all areas of learning. Language immersion prepares our students for success in a global economy. Bilingualism opens doors to higher education opportunities and gives our future leaders a competitive edge in the workforce. By losing these five teachers and thus losing the French immersion program, we are limiting our kids' opportunities rather than expanding them. When you support language immersion, you're building a smarter, more capable, and more culturally aware group of students while simultaneously strengthening our public education system. I implore you to put a halt to these detrimental cuts to O'Malley Elementary School. The French immersion community is counting on you. I am counting on you, and above all, our children are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If Virgin, Virginie Algrais, sorry, I messed that up. And Mr. Weaver, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, I am Benjamin Westveer, and I am here as a parent of a child in the Listening and Spoken Language Program housed within Willow Wall Elementary. My child hears with a hearing device called a Baha that gets her additional auditory input since she is deaf on one side. She fully hears on the other side and has been raised in the speaking and listening in English. Last Thursday, we were notified by email that the program moving, is moving from Willow Wall Elementary to Russian Jack next fall. And this was a complete shock as no one took the time to talk to us or anyone else in this unique community. No justification has been shared about why the current program is not meeting children's needs or how moving to very distinctly different programs into the same building will positively benefit the students in the Listening and Spoken Language Program. The current staff at Willow Wall are fully trained to handle the unique needs of hard-of-hearing children. However, we are in a budget crisis. How are you going to pay to train the teachers at the new building in these different circumstances? Additionally, how about the general education kids who now have to learn two unique circumstances and challenges in different communities? Establishing connections is extremely difficult for kids with language barriers. My child has been at this school for five years, and now you want to move her to a new school with all new kids and staff as none of the Willow Wall staff will be following the program. Russian Jack is also slated to receive sixty new children from Anaka Valley and a new principal next year. This has been tried in the past, and if ASD had taken the time to get oral history and talk to the stakeholders about why they suspended this program, separated this program, you would be questioning this decision, too. IDA, the same law quoted in the email, also states that kids need to be in the least restrictive environment possible and that you should work alongside the community when settling or changing programs.
Sorry, your time has expired. Thank you for your testimony. If Kimberly Hayes can come forward and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Virginie Algrais. I'm a French permanent resident in the U.S., a Flaborn member, an Alaskan resident, a military spouse, and an encouraged taxpayer. As a parent of four, two in high school, one in kindergarten, and a toddler, I'm committed to our community. My son Oscar is currently in the kindergarten program at O'Malley Elementary, which offers the French immersion curriculum that I passionately support. Unfortunately, this program is facing potential budget cuts. I moved to Encourage, Alaska from France in two thousand nineteen, just that the French immersion program was launching. This has been tried in the past and if ASD had taken the time to get oral history and talk to the stakeholders about why they suspended this program. Separated this program, you would be questioning this decision too. IDA, the same law quoted in the email, also states that kids need to be in the least restrictive environment possible. And that you should work alongside the community when settling or changing programs.
Sorry, your time has expired. Thank you for your testimony. If Kimberly Hayes can come forward and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Virginie Algrat. I'm a French permanent resident in the U.S., a flat board member, an Alaskan resident, a military spouse, and an encouraged taxpayer. As a parent of four, two in high school, one in kindergarten, and a toddler, I'm committed to our community. My son Oscar is currently in the kindergarten program at O'Malley Elementary, which offers the French immersion curriculum that I passionately support. Unfortunately, this program is facing potential budget cuts. I moved to Encourage, Alaska from France in two thousand nineteen, just as the French immersion program was launching. This initiative sends positive message to newcomers about our city's vibrancy. And was a key factor uh, in my choice of public education over private education. It highlights our multicultural environment and promotes unity among residents regardless of political views. Cutting this program would undermine our efforts to attract and retain residents, taxpayers too. It isn't fair to consider eliminating a program still in its early stages. The data from the COVID nineteen years does not reflect the program's success and efficiency. As a parent, I find it challenging to comprehend why such a substantial budget is established annually. And why such amazing programs are not following a long-term strategic vision. Immersion programs provide benefits such as accelerated language skills and ends, and ends cognitive abilities. Leading to a greater academic achievement. Cutting the French immersion program would deprive hundreds of families and our state of dis opportunities. I live in Govemahill and like many other parents, I drive nearly two hours to O'Malley Elementary daily. I remain dedicated to this effort for my children's benefit and for the community's success. The French immersion program embodies community spirit and showing the thriving success of our families. Why would we consider discontinuing something so successful? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your testimony. I need to, um, we've got a half hour left before the end of our noticed meeting. Um, I would need a motion from the board to extend until midnight. Uh, otherwise we would need to stop and at least get through our consent agenda. Um, but my intention would be if we do extend to continue a public testimony.
Mr. Chair, move to extend our meeting um, until no later than midnight.
Seconded. Seconded. Without objection from any board member, uh, we will extend the meeting until midnight.
I think we should explain that we're not allowed to go past midnight by municipal ordinance.
That's true too. By statute, we cannot conduct a meeting or conduct any business after midnight. So we do all get to go home then, but um, we can run right up against it. So we will extend and we will go ahead and continue to try to get uh, everybody uh, to have their testimony. Uh, Kimberly Hayes, I called. I don't see her approaching. Haven Harris and Naomi Tomko. You're present. And not seeing Ms. Tomko, Lee Ryan. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Do I need to press them? Nope. Hi, my name is Haven Harris. I am the father of a second grader at O'Malley Elementary involved in the French immersion program. I was born and raised in Nome, Alaska, and my wife was born and raised in Delta Junction. And what I want to talk to you guys about is opportunity. My wife and I were both proud to grow up in Alaska and we left the state to get our education. I went off to Michigan and she went off to California. And years later, we reconvened here in Alaska and in Anchorage. And it's the opportunity to allow our daughter a better education honestly than we received in rural Alaska that is keeping us in Anchorage. We both have multiple opportunities to leave the state. But as Alaska natives, people born and bred in this state with thousands of years behind us, we want to be in this state. However, the cuts, and I'm a former staffer in the state legislature, I've seen the financial game that's played. I've worked in Senate Finance. I, I, I sympathize so much with what you all are going through and I appreciate the fact that you're still here so late in the evening. But taking away such imperative programs like the immersion programs for us, that will honestly force me to reconsider whether my wife and daughter stay in the state for their education. As our state is shrinking for the first time in my lifetime, I consider that a dire threat to the state for the future. There will be no incentive to tie my family, my daughter, and others, if these type of programs go away, for them to come back and stay. With, when we are here, when we're born and bred here, when our education is here, we have a tie. Without those ties, I don't know what the future of this state is. Thank you. I'm not jealous of your guys' roles right now. You uh, you have incredibly difficult decisions and uh, good luck.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Michael Nield, if you can come forward and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
My name is Lee Ryan. I'm from Unalakleet. I'm an Upac Eskimo. My wife is Chelsea and my son's Gavin. I do not speak in Upac fluently, but my elementary bilingual teacher, Ms. Hogan, taught me the tools to learn my language. My son Gavin is in O'Malley's French immersion program and though French is not an Upac, the French language is giving him the uh, base level of linguistic knowledge. That teaches grammar, vocabulary, and pronunciation patterns that will help him in the future. Our district is one of the most diverse in the country. It's imperative that we uphold programs that serve our unique demographic needs, particularly immersion programs, which require long-term planning and sustainability. The current budget proposal reflects a disparity in how cuts are allocated. While instruction budgets have been reduced thirteen point four percent year over year, administrative functions have only seen a collective four point one percent decrease. Additionally, from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five, the budget line item, other purchase services, in total increased by three hundred twenty percent. With line item four forty and district administrative support services rising by over eight hundred percent. This is an opportunity to reallocate funds for student learning and development. Every teacher matters. Every dollar matters. While we acknowledge that the base student allocation requires long-term solutions, it's important to note that state one-time funding has been secured in five of the last seven years. This trend demonstrates that while funding challenges exist, ASD must plan accordingly rather than make irreversible cuts to staffing critical programs. ASD should consider reducing non-personnel and administrative support budgets while uh, state funding reforms. These administrative functions can be reinstated as needed when additional one-time funding becomes available or when a BSA increase is secured. By prioritizing instructional programs over admin costs, we can ensure that students continue to receive the high quality of education they deserve, including, including staffing immersion programs. You guys do have a tough job. I really do appreciate you guys extending through midnight and uh, you know, if you needed to snap into a Slim Jim.
Um, Krista Heppler, if you can come forward and if you will state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
My name is Michael Neeld. When my oldest daughter was four years old, she was learning how to read. We were practicing words and I gave her the word finger. She told me I needed to change the ending from ER to OW because that's the way she pronounces it. I was astounded at the self-awareness it took to know both that she pronounced it wrong and understand the spelling differences, pre-kindergarten. In second grade, she came home really bored one day, asking us if there was some sort of program at school where you could mix chemicals together and build and create things. We told her, yeah, it's called chemistry. You'll do it in about eight years. Luckily, the next day she started Ignite. She came home extremely excited, telling us that that is exactly what she was looking for. This was a turning point for her. If Ignite had not been an option, it would have been where she gave up on her education, as so many gifted students have. Instead, she had Ignite and is now going to go to the highly gifted program at Romig next year. Romig is the only middle school in Anchorage School District with a highly gifted program and there is only one elementary school. That is less than two percent of ASD schools with these programs as part of the curriculum. Five percent of elementary level students qualify for the Ignite program. Saving this program would cost less than a half a percent of the budget. We need to be able to continue challenging these students. Uh, to collaborate with each other, to think outside the box, as they are our innovators, our problem solvers. The children who will grow up to find creative new solutions to the current and future problems we will face. Uh, another quick point about the nursing is uh, I agree with all these other nurses that have spoken, that that is a dangerous area that we really don't want to get into. We can avoid it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If Emily Coulson can come forward and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Krista Heppler and I've been a school nurse with the district for the past thirty years. We are all here tonight because we care about our students. School nurses play a very special role. It is a job that is essential, yet not everyone understands it. We are not only nurses, but on many occasions play the role of a social worker or a counselor. I'm very concerned about school nurses being taken away from some of our schools. As proposed, the point five FTE nurse position at twenty-six schools could have a very severe impact on the care which a child receives at school. Remembering that some kids, for some kids, school nurses are their only healthcare provider. When I think about a nurse, with, when I think about a school not having a school nurse, my mind immediately thinks of a diabetic child. Who will assist them with their insulin, who will help them when they have a very low blood sugar? We are talking about preschoolers and elementary children. I think the child who's, who has not yet been diagnosed with asthma, but a school nurse who recognizes the symptoms, assessing their lung sounds for wheezing, and treats them with our emergency inhaler. Their parents haven't been able to take them to the doctors, so the nurse works closely with them and continues to assess their students every day. Who will monitor this child when there isn't a nurse in the building? Untreated wheezing can quickly put a child into the hospital. I think of the child who requires a tube feeding, well, they need to go to a different school, which is a full-time nurse. I think of the grieving child who visits the school nurse on a regular basis as a person of comfort and support that allows them to be able to stay in school. The nurse puts on that counselor hat and listens. Who will be there for this child as not all of the elementary schools have a counselor? There is no timeline when a child is diagnosed with diabetes, asthma, or epilepsy. We have children with severe allergic reactions and um, severe head injuries. Nurses will assess each child, each child every day and they come in contact with. I have a nurse, um, to have a nurse in the building only fifty percent of the time is a bit like rolling the dice. I encourage you to keep the nurses in our school.
Thank you for your testimony. If um, Emily Coulson was called. Mary Krusen. Jennifer Bruce Haber. And Emily Wesley, if you can come forward. Yeah, if you will state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
My name is Mary Krusen. As a school neighbor, I'm asking for Stream to be considered for Nunaka Valley Elementary Repurposment. Stream's use of outdoor spaces combined with their eastside priority enrollment would fit well at Nunaka. The program serves middle schoolers, matching that Nunaka's neighborhood population tends to be younger. I would like to reacknowledge that the Northeast Community Council in December submitted a resolution and a more recent community survey. Asking for a community-minded, outdoor-focused charter school that would use Nunaka's surrounding parks as well as priority neighborhood enrollment. Stream at Nunaka trades the dream of living close to a walkable, accessible neighborhood school with access to surrounding parks and surrounded by a supportive neighborhood from the elementary age to the same dream but available at middle school. I respect Stream's recognition and intention to focus on the pivotal time of middle school learning. There is a waiting list and if at Nunaka, the program can accept more kids, including my neighbors who just lost their neighborhood school environment. Stream has a carpooling program cutting down on potential traffic in the neighborhood issues. Highland is a great program and the Nunaka neighborhood will be there for them too. But my sense is they are less reliant on the surrounding natural setting unique to Nunaka. Perhaps solutions are Highland could be co-located in another underutilized school, saving another, ideally eastside school from closure. Or to take over Stream's current lease if Stream does move. Or if more schools are closed, but please reconsider the pattern of only closing title one schools. Perhaps Highland could match well with a different building. I'm happy to continue, to continue this conversation and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And next we actually have Jennifer, I'm sorry, Emily Coulson, yeah. If you will state your name for the record, let me say after you, we have Jennifer Bruce Haber telephonically. Followed by Emily Wesley, but if you will go ahead and state your name.
I'm Emily Wesley, actually. I'm an eighth grade teacher at Anchorage Stream Academy and I'm here tonight to advocate for our school. Stream to move into the ASD building at Nunaka Valley. Anchorage Stream Academy is a project-based experiential outdoor education program. With a focus on STEM and we've been housed in Wayland Baptist University, paying a private institution rent for nine years. We have proven our program to be highly desirable, successful, and groundbreaking. Our school was one of the first in the district to take the plunge and go phone-free using yonder pouch technology. Our school spent the past two years having students design and build a tiny home for donation for the houseless. Inspiring young people and families to take the initiative and create real change in our community. Over the past two weeks, our eighth graders have spent hours volunteering in the community at Anchorage Animal Rescue, Food Bank of Alaska, Habitat for Humanities Restore, and Baxter's Senior Memory Care Unit for elders with dementia. Our program is incredible and our students deserve a facility to thrive in. We do not have the appropriate space or facilities for our program where we currently are. Kids are consistently working in highways because of the lack of space. And for the three years that I've been at Stream, I've coached the cross-country ski team that does not have a place to practice. Therefore, current volunteers and coaches, about five to seven people every single day, drive forty-four kids to Russian Jack Park to practice. Housing us at Nunaka would allow our ski team to ski right to those trails and foster a love for outdoor winter activities. Programs at Stream instill a lifelong love of Alaska. Our charter allows for us to grow to three hundred and moving to Nunaka would help facilitate this. We are always waitlisted. For enrollment in our cutting-edge, hands-on learning model could reach even more East Anchorage families. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, if uh, Benjamin Records and Melissa White can come forward. Uh, next testimony is Jennifer Bruce Haber by telephone. Ms. Bruce Haber, if you can unmute.
Yep. Hi, this is Jennifer Bruce Haber. I appreciate you all staying awake for us. I'm from Eagle River. I have kids in ASD. I'm also the nurse at Eagle River Elementary School, where I serve up to sixty kids medically and emotionally a day. I often don't take planning time, lunches, you know, work till midnight, just kidding. I often um, I see these kids though and, and I help them and our school only has two hundred ninety this year because sixth grade is no longer with us. Um, and that puts us at risk for being cut down to two or three days a week, which I like the rolling dice analogy. That's exactly what it feels like. Um, so in my opinion, I agree that a full-time school nurse would keep teachers um, in a better situation. They're, they inappropriately, no offense to teachers, inappropriately diagnose and treat students, which isn't in their job description or face. Um, it also puts kids in front of a bunch of classmates getting um, the whole class distracted and then it embarrasses them often because they don't want to talk about things in front of their peers. Um, and that's obviously concerning. Um, nurses in general improve student attendance um, for children that otherwise, um, their families may not feel safe standing in that day because they need nebulizer treatment or something because they're having a little bit of an exacerbation or um, if there's not a trained staff member there, they may not even know what a nebulizer is. Um, and it seems like this or that or the other. I'm sorry, it's really late as you know. Let me just read my thing I wrote and I'll shut up after that. I mean, sorry for the word. Um, it, it also improves parents' livelihoods, being able to go to work and be able to send their kids somewhere during the day that they can learn and not be able have to keep them home or have them sent home improperly. Um, nurses catch barriers to learning that can be fixed. Vision, hearing, sometimes they have um, just major issues that seem, that seem so major and then we figure out what it is because nobody else can do it, but we see them so often. We finally figure it out and we work with them and we work with their families and their doctors and then all of a sudden their life isn't.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, again, Benjamin Records, if you're in the room, or Melissa White. Um, not seeing anyone, Jody Butto. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna catch that in just a second. Uh, Ryan Chanley. Okay, and um, Elias Oswald. Meanwhile, we will get uh, testimony by phone from Jen, Jenna Marie Test. Ms. Test, if you can unmute, you have two minutes.
Yeah, right. Hi, my name is Jody Budo. I'm a pediatrician. Um, and I am a product of the Anchorage School District and the East High Gymnastics Team, which built my confidence up and allowed me to go to medical school. Um, and now I've been a pediatrician here for almost thirty years. And I am representing the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Asthma and Allergy Foundation of Alaska. Both of those groups are um, supporting our school nurses. We see firsthand the struggles families face when their children attend schools that cannot provide the necessary daily health-related services or um, that allow a child to return to school after an illness. that allow a child to return to school after an illness or injury. Schools need to be able to provide in-house nursing services to allow these children to remain in school. Missed school days are detrimental to learning, and the goal is to keep children in the classroom. A child with diabetes, asthma, or anyone that needs daily medications and monitoring require a school nurse. Children have feeding tubes or tracheotomies, and daily nursing support is required to keep them in the school. The current Anchorage School District proposed budget is showing a loss of thirteen school nurse positions over the next school year. This would mean that some schools would move to a part-time nurse position or a nurse who is split between two schools. This leaves the care of children to a designated adult in the school, often volunteer personal, volunteer personal, sorry, personnel, assistant principals, and administrative assistants, who may not have the training necessary for emergent situations, and causing children to either go home or, God forbid, an ambulance to come get them to get skilled care. Please remember these children when working on your budget.
Thank you for your testimony. And drop back, Jen Marie Test, if you're still listening, if you can reconnect, we will put you back in the loop immediately. We've lost her connection right at the moment she was supposed to testify. So if you can, please call back in. And I called Ryan Shanley, I believe, Ms. Oswald, Brian Shanley. Yes, please go ahead. Uh, yeah, there you go.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ryan Shanley. I have a child in the French immersion program at O'Malley Elementary School. And I'd like to start by thanking all the foreign language educators, many of whom are here tonight. You know, we really appreciate them. They do a great job. As parents and community members, my wife and I are definitely not supportive of cutting these programs, be it by direct cuts or masking the reduction of FTEs at the schools, which eliminates the teaching staff, which in turn, you know, eliminates these programs. My wife and I are really grateful that our children can learn a foreign language from such a young age. There's so many reasons out there to learn a foreign language. I look at it not only as a personal growth opportunity for my children, but also from a more practical and business-minded lens, realizing that this sets them up for success and opens new doors for them later on in life. I work for multinational corporations with offices all over the world. I've seen firsthand many of the opportunities out there for people who speak multiple languages. These are opportunities I wish I had, but I don't speak a foreign language, at least not one fluently. We all want better for our children than we have for ourselves, and these programs provide that. There are real reasons to save them and keep them funded. We'll be actively depriving our future leaders of the skills they need to be competitive in a world by cutting our foreign language programs. They'd be ashamed to lose these programs, and I'd be remiss if I didn't set an example for my children, come here and advocate on their behalf, to do everything I can to save their programs, to save the schools that my daughter loves to go to every day. I don't think I ever loved school as much as my daughter does, and it's because of the French program and the emerging teachers that are there educating her every day. And really, we just want the best educational opportunities we can give them. So I'm here to request that the board insert funding for the O'Malley FTEs, those reductions back in the budget. So please restore guarantee the funding before any damage is done to these programs.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Elias Oswald. And Sylvia Rothstein. Jessica Oswald. And Corissa Ribbons. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm speaking on behalf of Sylvia Rothstein. I am a parent of French immersion students at O'Malley Elementary. I'm requesting that the proposed budget be revised immediately to restore O'Malley teachers. The proposed loss of five elementary school teachers from O'Malley has broad and sweeping effects that are not obvious from the simple reduction in teachers. Please don't unintentionally discard the highly successful French immersion program by passing a budget that cuts O'Malley teachers. Teachers from the immersion program need to be hired early and can't be rescued by additional state funding that comes in at the last minute. Without French teachers, there will be no French program. Please support French immersion at the elementary school level and continue French immersion through the high school. There's no way to run an immersion program at O'Malley with the loss of five positions, which would come entirely from the French immersion program, not the neighborhood school. These five positions plus one at Goldenview need to be added back into the ASD budget now. Otherwise, there will not be a sufficient lead time to hire and obtain visas for French teachers. Because of this staffing and hiring challenges unique to the language immersion program, the loss of five positions will decimate and ultimately destroy the French immersion program at O'Malley. This is not an exaggeration. It is a fact that has been verified by the school's principal, Cherry Galloway. French immersion is a highly successful and important program, which is drawing families into the school from all of her Anchorage. Fifty percent of the program's kids are not zoned for O'Malley, my own family included. Half of the neighborhood schools are enrolled in French immersion. Of the neighborhood school kids are enrolled in French immersion, which means many of the kids might go elsewhere. And thank you for being here, for offering us this opportunity to speak, and for adding O'Malley teachers back into the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Stephanie Painter. Craig Nelson. Thank you. If you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Stephanie Painter. And I could just say ditto. I don't have anything new to say, but I've been here for six hours, so I might as well just say it. My daughter is a first grader at O'Malley in the French immersion program. I am a West High grad, class of two thousand. Her father is Chugiak, class of ninety-nine. Grandmother, West High, class of seventy-one. Grandfather, East High, class of sixty-nine. My daughter's ASD blood runs deep. I know the district has been handed an S H I T sandwich, pardon my French, and we need to figure out how to eat it by March first. I've been reassured by legislators and board members that this is not the final budget, and I do believe that. I would just ask that as we distribute reductions, you be mindful that cuts to O'Malley and in turn, the French immersion program cannot be easily undone. The point of no return for normal staffing may be May fifteenth, as I've heard suggested, but for French immersion, we are already flirting with the point of no return as our teachers require time to acquire J-one visas. I don't believe that it is the intent of the board to eliminate the French immersion program, but I'm afraid that the budget as presented will have that consequence.
Thank you very much. Corissa Ribbons, are you connected? If you'll unmute, and then that'll be followed by Stephanie, by Craig Nelson.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I am Corissa Ribbons. I'm a third grade teacher. After twelve years of teaching overseas in Indonesia, I've come home to Alaska and started working for ASD. This is my second year here in Anchorage, and actually, for the second time, my own job is on the chopping block. I'm slated to be cut, but I'm not here to talk about myself. While I'm very sad to hear about cuts tonight, librarians, assistant principals, and et cetera, I'm primarily here to testify about the vital importance of having a full-time medical professional in our schools. I work at a Title I school. We have wonderful, precious children, many of whom come from challenging situations. Our nurse is incredibly important for their well-being and for the smooth operation of our school. She takes care of day-to-day injuries, as well as medically fragile students in occasional emergencies. I guess on any given day, I send at least ten students to the nurse. That's ten times that instruction can continue because I'm not stopped by an injured student. Just imagine what it's like to deal with blood or vomit with twenty-seven eight-year-olds in the room. Our nurse also coordinates for food to be sent home each weekend. She meets fifty low-income students and donates money from her own salary to provide spare clothes. There are students who come inadequately dressed for the weather or in clothes that are dirty or smelly. I can't emphasize enough what a difference it makes for them to come back to my class warm, clean, cared for, and better prepared for their day. Without a nurse, who is supposed to take care of medical needs? Who helps a student with a profuse nosebleed or can't breathe due to asthma, broken bones, concussions at recess? I'm not a medical professional. Neither are the front office staff. ASD has plans for major emergencies. We need to be prepared for the minor ones as well and everything that keeps our students safe. Please prioritize the health of our students and maintain full-time nurses for our school. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Craig Nelson, followed by Lucas Smith.
Hi there. I'm Craig Nelson, and I'm one of the lucky few members of the American Army who gets stationed here in Anchorage. I'm in my nineteenth year now, and I've been trying this entire time to get up to Anchorage, and I finally made it. We love it here. My wife and I, our two kids, absolutely love being here, and we love being a part of the O'Malley French immersion program as well. I'm here to advocate for the immersion program because I think this program and others like it offer a unique chance for young kids to harness a superpower that they all seem to have, which is to quickly train their brains to think in another language so that they can speak it fluently. In my previous assignment, my family and I were in Belgium, and our two sons attended local schools there, all in French. Neither one knew any French before our arrival in Belgium, and I was apprehensive about this. I personally have tried and failed to learn German, Spanish, Pashto, and Arabic. All of those attempts were from a position of sanctuary. In an English-speaking environment, there was no immersion. But after one year in Belgium, I witnessed the superpower that I mentioned earlier in action when I discovered my son speaking easily in French with another little boy while we were eating lunch in a park in a wonderful little French town called Rebo-Vilée. And my son did this without a second thought. And to him, in fact, he wasn't even speaking a second language. He was just doing what came naturally from his time being immersed in French. In conclusion, I would urge you to preserve O'Malley's French immersion program because it offers our kids a chance to unlock the potential that they have to map another way of thinking and speaking into their young brains before it goes otherwise unused and untapped. Thanks for your time, and thanks for your commitment and your endurance tonight.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Smith, followed by Gabby Ide.
Good evening. My name is Lucas Smith. I'm a Anchorage resident. The trident, a three-pronged spear, is a symbol of power, strength, and authority, which makes it good for illustrating what DEI is about and what it hopes to achieve. DEI can be viewed as the trident of Marxism. Instead of empowering individuals through liberty, instead of making wealth fully secureable by individuals and accessible to all by individual merit, instead of maintaining a limited government with limited power by the consent of the people, diversity takes power from individuals by developing, entrenching, and empowering class entitlement within the fabric of a society. Equity garnishes the strength of individual wealth and redistributes it through the government according to an extreme ideology. Inclusion involves the government seizing authority to dictate and achieve extreme social objectives. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are Marxist hallmarks. One infamous Marx axiom is "From each according to his ability, to each according to his needs." Karl Marx sought to destroy capitalism, the family, individuality, Christianity, and nations. Marxism is the prelude to communism. Beyond the threat DEI poses to freedom, we know that communism has murdered upwards of one hundred million of its own citizens, more than any other form of government combined. If these facts aren't enough to instill the fear of God in everyone, there can be no more clear indictment of DEI than its role in the physical mutilation of children. DEI is not something we should aspire to achieve. Eradicating DEI from the public school system must take precedence over advancing public school in any way. Given the choice between school with DEI or no public education whatsoever, for me, the choice is clear. I choose no public education. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Karina Hopkins Vaca, if you can come forward and aside, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm Gabby Ide, chapter chair of Moms for Liberty Anchorage. I'm grateful to be here. We educate, unite, and empower our community to improve education and protect parental rights. Last month, I asked you to remove DEI, the DEI part of the community engagement department to save a much-needed four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars annually. It seems odd to add ASL services to the department to save less than twenty thousand while leaving the real issue unaddressed. This month, a letter was sent from the White House informing you of your responsibility to remove rebranded discrimination from the district to secure, again, much-needed funds for education. It appears there are numerous places between the couch cushions the district can find cash and fund students better. I help people with budgets on a regular basis, and we find that their Netflix, Prime, and ESPN subscriptions are not nearly as valuable as paying the light bill. When the district proposes huge class size increases, which to one member's comment also adds to teacher workloads, rather than trimming more assistant principals or subscriptions like AASB and NASC, among others, it feels that we may have missed the forest for the trees. Next, I walk people through reasons they may want to amputate the Tahoe, Yukon, or Highlander. In this case, consider the extra non-instruction hour per day in middle school, saving millions. Since we know that classroom size is a meaningful factor in education results, maybe the district can try again to trim in areas appearing necessary but are truly not when facing the reality of cramming upwards of forty students in a classroom. Our beloved parents, teachers, and students tell me that they are overwhelmed and burned out by the bells and whistles the district foists upon them. Maybe this budget situation is an opportunity to readdress priorities and get back to basics. Maybe inflation makes budgeting challenging, but the first thing you learn about inflation is that increased government spending increases inflation. So we request another look. It's possible a spot was missed under those cushions over there. We support.
Sorry, your time has expired. Thank you for your testimony. Denise, I'm sorry, if it's winter, I can't read the last name very clearly. But Denise starts with a W, if you can come forward, and if you'll state your name for the record.
I'm Karina Hopkins Vaca, an ASD parent, here to comment on one aspect of the importance of language immersion programs. My family is a blend of two very different cultures. I'm an East Coast girl of mixed European descent, and my husband is a West Coast Asian-American of Chinese descent. We met in Alaska over a decade ago and made this our new home. We now have two kids, the oldest a kindergartner in the Chinese immersion program at Scenic Park Elementary. My husband has a long history with languages. His first language was Thai, and he learned English when he entered kindergarten. He minored in Mandarin in college and lived two years in rural Japan, immersed in the language and culture there. He's seen how enmeshed language and culture are and how connected to the world having another language can make you feel. And that's what we want, our kids to be empathetic humans and good citizens of the world. In addition to keeping our son connected to his family's origins, this is why we intentionally sought out the Chinese immersion program. When I attended the program's Chinese New Year performances last month, it brought tears to my eyes to see kids of many ethnic backgrounds working hard and having fun celebrating a culture that originated far across the ocean, a culture that has been misunderstood and persecuted in the U.S. in the past, and again after 2020, when we saw a rise in hate crimes against Chinese Americans. During that New Year performance, I watched my son explore and celebrate a part of his identity. I watched other kids celebrate it too. And for that hour and a half of color and music and culture, the world seemed a little more unified. I'm here from the Chinese program, but the importance of the language programs extends to all the cultures represented by an immersion program in ASD. They bring our kids together and help them understand and empathize with others who are different than themselves. They are unique programs that set ASD apart, and they are so important in a city as diverse as Anchorage. I ask you to please continue to prioritize and support these programs as you're navigating difficult budget decisions. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight and for staying late.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Again, Denise, I'm just gonna say it starts with a W. The rest of it, I can't read very well. Laura Greggs. Ah, thank you. And Kelly Tishida. Okay, yes, if you'll go ahead and state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
My name is Laura Gregerson, and my husband and I are raising two boys, one at Aquarian Charter School and one at the HG Program at Romich. Both schools need the BSA to increase to maintain their current staff and services. Fitness, physical and mental, requires a combination of academic rigor and teamwork in the classroom and on the field, the court, the ice, or the stage. My teen has unbelievable energy, and the after-school sports focus that energy so he can focus on schoolwork as well as good choices. My teen has unbelievable energy and the after-school sports focus that energy so he can focus on schoolwork as well as good choices. I have seen the music pro- program at Romig folks focus part of his energy as well as the higher expectations in the HG program. My oldest son starts West High next year and has been looking forward to West hockey since third grade. He also plans to continue his running career. After-school activities and sports matter. They connect the community, students and parents, and they balance out the pressures of being a teen in today's society, keep our kids playing sports in middle school and high school. It is my observation as a petroleum geologist in Alaska that revenue from declining oil fields cannot fuel our basic needs in Alaska alone. Please keep what we have ASD. Use your intellect and influence to get our legislators to add additional revenue streams such as income tax for all people who work in the state, including slope workers and/or reducing the permanent fund dividend to fund our education and necessary state services. In 1976, I know this because of great librarians, the people of the state of Alaska established the permanent fund to make sure that future Alaskans would benefit from early revenues of the state's non-renewable oil and gas resource. 2025 is the 49th year since the people of Alaska created this funding source for the future. As expected, the non-renewable resource is much less, averaging 465.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your testimony. Uh Alex Rosales, if you'll come forward and if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
Uh Kelly Cheeta, I, I have three kids that go to True Gatch Optional Elementary. Um first of all, thank you all for sticking with us and hearing everybody out. I really appreciate your, your time and, and your attention. I'd like to advocate for our school. And I do not feel like we, we had, we, we have the room to have any resources taken from us whatsoever. True Gatch Optional is a truly exceptional school. We're small, but we're very mighty. We have great standardized scores. We have engaged parents. Amazingly, I think most impressively, I have never heard one of my three children say anything about bullying in the school. I would, I would invite all of you to come to the school to see what an exceptional place it is. I hear, I've heard here how enrollment is going down in our school district and that's, that's, there's a downward pressure in many areas. That's not happening in True Gatch Optional. Our classes are full. They're already at maximum capacity for the most part. With a change, that with the proposed change, it would, it, it'll move our class of size up to about 44 per class is what I understand. I don't know how anybody can teach with 44, um 44 classes. One teacher, 44 classes. I don't know how that happens. The kids are gonna get left behind. Kids are not gonna get a proper education. And it's not just this, the, the, the teachers themselves, it's that support staff. We need our, our nurses, we, or we need our nurse, we need our librarian. We need all the support staff in the office um to help support everything that happens there. I'd just say that all of that is, is um essential as part of our work. I don't know how it works without the whole team and I would just advocate to keep every single physician. If I could, if I could have more, I would ask for more. We are relatively small budget in, in school compared to others and therefore it would have a lower impact than some of the other costs, so.
Thank you very much for your testimony. So Rosales, if you'll state your name for the record, you have two minutes.
It's red, it's all, okay, good. Alexander Rosales, and I just wanted to come up after so many hours. It's 11:15. I wanted to thank every single one of you for what you're doing and actually listening to parents, because that is the most important and that's all I gotta say. So thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your testimony. To touch back real quick, Denise Winter or worse, I can't tell for sure. Jessica Oswald, Elias Oswald, Melissa White, Jenna Marie Test was telephonic. Benjamin Rickards, Lee Ryan, Naomi Tomco, Kimberly Hayes. Um I think I've called everybody that hasn't shown up two or three times. That does complete our public testimony for this evening. I do wanna thank everyone for coming, being patient and uh helping us move through testimony as quickly as we possibly could. Thank you all. With that, uh we will move to um our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, absent any board member wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda, I move to approve it as listed.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. A pause if any member wants to pull an item. Seeing no hands, um I will ask you to take a vote.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Holloman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Member Wilson? Member Donley?
Yes.
We have approved the consent agenda. The action, only action item we have has been moved to our March meeting. Uh that brings us to non-action items and I would ask if anyone has anything to pull for discussion. Member Higgins? 106 is pulled for discussion. Any other items anyone wishes to discuss? Seeing no hands, Member Higgins, if you'd like to speak to them?
Yeah, there was a concern raised uh that I wanna bring in front of the board. Everybody got a copy of the concern except me, but I was forwarded and I appreciate that. That I would have a conflict of interest in regards to the determination with Lakewood because I had met with um uh representatives of the ANCCS, Alaska Native Cultural Torres School. I'll mention that I'd also met with Wilkes-Shula. I should have met with all the schools that were engaged and all the schools that are being considered for different uh placement. And that they felt like that was inappropriate as if there's negotiations ongoing between the school district and the school and that um in my discussion with ANC, with uh Wilkes-Shula that they had already been assured 100% that they had the school already given to them. It was a lot of confusion here uh within it. Uh for a conflict of interest, I know of no one uh with, no one attending the school. I know of no staff members that other than the ones I met when I came by to visit them like I visited the other schools. And um I have no financial interest of any nature. Uh so the traditional conflict of interest isn't there. Um I have concerns about uh what will happen with ANCCS in a few years because there's no plan in regards to what will they will go and they were previously at East High School. I knew about that and that's when I got involved with them. But that's the only extent that I have been there. I have not taken a position on any of these uh placements and uh within it, but I caution myself because uh when somebody raises a concern, you don't focus on who raised it, you don't focus on why. You just look at the concern and see if it has any merit. I've asked for a look, a review and from the review from a legal that I understand, there's no basis here uh for a uh conflict of interest in a, in any sense that I'm aware of. But I do wanna disclose it to the board. I'll disclose it to the public. And if the board has a view on it uh and wants to uh pursue that, that's fine. From my perspective, I don't find that I have any conflict of interest. I have an interest with every school and all the students and um uh and that's the extent of it. And I, just as much as I've met with Wilkes-Shula and met with ANCCS and other schools, um that's the extent. I've visited every school that being closed that maybe looked at and I've visited every school that expressed interest in wanting placement. Um so I did attend a, a, a request for a committee that was meeting about what they were going to do. They were apparently led to believe they were going to get back to if that was closed, that would be something that the board would decide, not administration without coming to us. So that was a little bit of a surprise. Um and so they asked me to attend the meeting. I encouraged them to express what they would like, put priorities, give us one, two and three, and let the administration know. And talking to the superintendent, he was recommending the same thing. We don't know what they, what they wanted or what they would like. So um um disclosing that, I've also attended when different schools have done PTA or meetings and they've asked me to attend, I attend those as well. So um if there's any interest or any concerns of board members, I'm not sure where we proceed with this, but I wanted to fully disclose it. And like I said, I, I don't feel like I have anything that constitutes a conflict of interest at all.
The, the legal advice um that I read uh on behalf of the board asserts that conflict of interest in Alaska uh is generally left to the person with the conflict to report or someone else on the board to raise the issue. And of course, it really comes forward when it's time to vote. But if anybody does feel that there's a conflict of interest, they can raise the issue and the board would vote on it. Um I don't see it, but if anyone wishes to raise it, um we're happy to consider that. Anyone else wish to speak to this?
So.
Member Bellamy?
To, thank you. To clarify then, uh we wouldn't do that tonight.
I would, I would think it would actually come up at the time.
At the time that we take, okay, thank you.
But, but everybody knows in advance now.
I was anticipating when it comes up again, we're gonna have discussions. I would participate in that. So if there was some issue, I thought addressing it now would resolve that because I'm gonna be raising questions to the administration as well.
Understood. If no one else has a discussion point, we will move to um Section J's School Board Administration comments. Um I will start with my left, with Member Higgins. Microphone?
I won't have any time. I don't press the button, huh? Uh a few comments here. Uh one is just to the speakers. As much as it's kinda depressing hearing about the cuts, I also wanna say that there's another side of that. I saw a lot of successes that people feel like we're achieving that they wanna maintain and, and there was, you know, some positive aspects of that and I appreciate that. Um when I met with the legislature, I heard about the tremendous, you know, cutting administration costs. And I wanna share what I told them. I said, if we cut all administration costs at 6%, it'd be 33 million and we would still have a massive deficit. And when we cut all administration, we would cut all finance, payroll and IT. And uh we would probably save a lot of money because nobody would be getting paid. Uh so it really wouldn't cut uh realistic to even cut that. So our administration cost of nonprofits is 10% is considered to be limits. We're six, so we're way down below that. I, I would ask the administration to possibly consider the issue of whether or not there was some minor changes in the budget for things like deaf and, uh hard of hearing or the French or something else that if there's, if it's gonna delay the hiring or something like that, find one area and put it someplace else. I don't know. Uh that's something the administration needs to look at. I won't be able to assess that at all. Uh so I wouldn't think of it that way, but I, I'm a little bit concerned about that. Now also, I appreciate the comments from the deaf and hard of hearing in regards to their concerns. I've met with them in the past. They're very, that committee, the met community is very close-knit and they'll get heavily engaged in everything in the schools, so I can understand their concerns, but I wanna say that the administration was asked to put together a budget quickly with no information about what we're really gonna have of spending. We had to make it sure it's balanced. They did that. I think if we were stuck with this budget, it would be a different ballgame. But given the whole scenario where we are within the budget process, I appreciate what they had to do. Knew this would be disturbing, but um no, that is not the final budget. I'm confident of that. But we, we'll wait to see how it plays out at that point, but I appreciate the problem they had and I'm not critical of what they had to cut. Thank you.
Member Jacobs?
Uh just wanna express appreciation for everyone who's taken time to write in and, and who came to speak with us tonight. Um your voices are heard and your efforts are appreciated. Uh thank you. Have a good evening all.
Member Donley?
Continuing my theme from our last meeting, I'm, I'm believe also that the current transportation statutory formula is not up to date and not fair to this community. Um and our students or our taxpayers. Um looks like it was based on studies done a long time ago and is badly in need of refreshing because I don't believe that we're getting a fair share of the state funding for transportation dollars. Uh put that on the list along with the uh area, the district cost differential, the lack of uh participation in the cost of education by the unorganized areas of Alaska and what I think is still a uh questionable system of capping local government contributions, which I'm researching more and more and finding more and more confusing how they ever got to the point where we are in this state, since we seem to be the only state in the Union that's doing what we're doing in that area. But be that as it may, I wanted to um, there are many states in the nation still recognize George Washington's birthday, which was last week and um have the continental flag here in honor of our first president, who I believe was just undoubtedly our greatest American. And uh I just wanted to read uh one of my favorite quotes from George Washington that he had in his Thanksgiving proclamation where he stated, "Is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the province of Almighty God, to obey his will, to be grateful for his benefits and to humbly to employ his protection and favor." Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wilson.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Lessons?
I'm gonna invoke incredible ASD demonstration of what our students know and can able to do and put a shameless plug uh for anybody, all five of you left in the room, six, seven, eight. The West High School Theater students combined with um musicians and tech support and dance um have been putting on Hades Town. And I see some hands going and I had the privilege of attending with my family this past weekend and it was extraordinary. And I want to read what the director wrote um about his, uh he said he's the luckiest director in the city. But what he said about his students was this. These perform, it is a story, I should say, uh about, it says, about Orpheus. And Orpheus could see how the world could be in spite of the way it is. And he says of his students, "These performers, designers, technicians and musicians see past today's mess and boldly try to make the world better." And that has just been um a really uplifting thought for me over the past few days. I wanted to share that. Um and in that spirit, I will say I have a shopping list about $71 million long to try to boldly take, to boldly make the Anchorage School District better. And in order to afford a $71.1 million shopping list, give or take, we need a significant base student allocation uh increase, a change in statute. And I did a quick tally, a very rough tally of the different topics that people spoke about today and I think folks asked for at least $33 million worth of investments in our schools here and here and here, right? Everything has a price tag. It's all in the budget book. It all has value. And in order to make that work, we need significant action from the legislature. But I have my shopping list. I know what I want. I'm eager to look uh for collaborators and um see how we can um see how the world could be in spite of the way it is. Thanks.
Member Bellamy?
I don't even think I can compose a sentence right now, so I'm going to pass.
That comes to me normally I'll, I have nothing or maybe one or two things. I actually have a long list tonight. But I had a former colleague call me up to say that his son was directing Hades Town at West and I really should go see it. And we did, and it, it really was a phenomenal performance. I mean, the energy and skill of the students is just overwhelming. It's a complex choreography, as well as a lot of singing and acting, and, and it was all just great. And it says walking out, there was a non-ASD, non-reliant school bus in the parking lot. Um Matt Sue's students are putting on the same production this coming weekend. And I think as Member Lawson said, it is being held over. Uh West High is doing it again, '26, '27, and '28, so you don't have to drive to the Valley. But those students came in to watch and got to spend time with the cast after. They got to meet the characters they're about to play this coming weekend. Um the interaction between our students with other districts is something I think just doesn't happen enough. But I, I think it's very cool that Matt Sue's students came in to watch an ASD production and, and have that cross-fertilization um from them. Another thing that's going on right now, we have a number of students that are in Nome and possibly other places on the Iron Dog Trail. If you go to irondog.org, all the video that's on there showing people coming into checkpoints and being interviewed are, are from South High students. Uh and GCI portions out the bandwidth they need to broadcast. Um so they are reporting, as they have done every year for a number of years now. They covered the start at Big Lake. Um it's a big event, and it is something that really gives a lot of practical experience. Um and I, last year, uh the story was they, their flight back actually got canceled because of weather. They wound up going out with someone on Norton Sound to pull crab pots and have a uh snow crab feast um after every parent was called and advised of what was going on and gave their permission. But again, they also worked with students from uh Nome and some of the villages to uh have them participate in this as well. So our students get to spend some time in remote parts of Alaska and working alongside of rural students, which is something we, we simply don't let happen enough or make happen enough. Um Trugatchi Eagle River High School combined, their art department's having a show this Friday. Uh and on um Saturday at East High, the Ukulele Festival is happening. It will uh obviously feature the ukulele band from East, but actually have activities and workshops for students of all ages. So if you have a little bit of musical inclination, that would be a great event to catch as well. Uh and again, when I was in June, uh our PAASB uh student leadership, we had four or five of our students there participating uh and also seeing upfront how uh, how government works or does not work in Alaska, and, and learning a great deal about it. And that, like many of the students that were here tonight, they represented us exceptionally well. Um those are the, the main highlights I just wanted to hit real quick. And thank you all for staying long enough to, to where we are speaking to somebody. But other than that, I, I will say so many times over the past couple of weeks, have watched our students in action and just been astounded at the capability and the passion that they have shown for what they are doing. And we need funds to sustain that and provide the programs that, that generate it. And I hope we get them. Other than that, if the superintendent has comments or any of the staff has comments, I would entertain a motion.
Chair moves adjourn.
Second? No second? Did you? Moved and seconded to adjourn, we're done.